Good morning. I will call this Washoe County Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. It is May 23rd and 10 o'clock. Ms. Etchavaria, can you please lead us in the salute to the flag? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alexis Hill Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark.
Present.
Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant DA Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a form.
Thank you so much. We will start with item three, Mr. Manager.
Item three is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you so much. I look to my board. Do folks want to make any announcements? Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, who took care of the elderly woman and her cable line problem we talked about last week. Waste management, apparently the trucks were so tall it was kind of ripping down her internet lines and so forth. Soon after I read the letter, Kate reached out to AT&amp;T and they went to the neighborhood chair. "Hill, you might be interested since this is your neighborhood and check the lines." It was not waste management's responsibility, but the companies who oversee the lines, so cable, internet, Nevada Energy, have to make sure that their lines are high enough off the ground to avoid these trucks. Guess they fixed several lines in the neighborhood. This is what I call good government, understanding the problem and fixing it. Again, thanks to Kate Thomas. Last week, I repeated up here what a public commenter had said. I did in fact check it before I repeated it. The information was wrong, but I'm sure I'll probably do something like that again. It was repeated to me to make a point, but soon after the words were out of my mouth, instead of Manager Brown correcting the comment or informing me of the amount of the Clark County annual budget or having one of his staff do so, instead I'm faced with emails and a bit of snarky comments, asking, comment from Manager Brown, asking Abby Jacobin, Washoe County Chief Financial Officer, she update me on the budget at Clark County. Out of this exchange, I have managed to snag a meeting with Abby, which I'm looking forward to. I had Mark Robinson from the Reno Gazette Journal on the phone asking me why I voted no on the budget, my comments, and my comments about the Clark County budget. It was sort of make, if Mike Clark didn't understand the county budget based on my comment. I just wanted to make it clear, Manager Brown, I was greatly amused by the exchange. Let me be clear, I voted no on the budget as an act of solidarity with the rank-and-file employees who seem destined not to get a retroactive pay, catching them up with Manager Brown's direct reports, who were given raises in January 3, 2023. Each and every Washoe County employee should contact Manager Brown and ask about the lack of retro pay. Because of this exchange with Manager Brown, I'm going to change my tactics a bit, and when I have questions, I'd like county staff to be available to answer my questions as I'm sitting here. Often when I get done with the Board of County Commissioners meetings, I send several emails to clarify my questions, to get answers. I didn't get. I realized after telling Mark Robinson he should complete a public records request and read my emails, wouldn't it be a lot faster to have my question answered up here far more transparent? Hence, we will relieve Mark Robinson for needing to call me and clarify my position for Washoe County. And Mark, you can call me anytime. My comments are not directed at Mark Robinson or the RGJ. When former County Commissioner Jung was sitting up in this very seat representing District 3, there were many county employees in the audience to answer questions. Believe me, I know. I've gone back and watched five years' worth of the YouTube Board of County Commission meetings. It would seem these exchanges ended with her departure, so let's bring them back. Also, due to Clark County budget, RGJ article, Manager Brown comments, I'll be asking a lot more questions because I want to make sure we are as transparent as possible up here, and I apologize for the time it will add to the meetings, but I learn quickly and Manager Brown is a good teacher. You know, public comment is still missing, and as I talk about, as I'll talk about in a bit, several business owners wanted to come in and speak today but can't because they have no idea what our public comment will be heard. They can't leave their businesses and sit here all day just to go, just going to put it on the record at each meeting. I know several people who went and made public comment at the Nevada Ethics Commission last week. The Ethics Commission has public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting, but they instructed the public commenters to go to the Attorney General's office. The meeting was recorded so it's public, and so people can watch it. You know, again, as I talk about this public comments at the beginning of the meeting, you know, I'm one of the few people on this dais old enough to remember the Vietnam War protesters, the protests in the South about equal rights for everybody in America. And part of Dr. King and the rest of the folks that protested during the Civil Rights Movement was to have a voice, to have their voice heard. And here at this particular meeting, you can't have your voice heard at the beginning of the meeting. It was unilaterally decided by one person, and I am in total disagreement of that. I'd like to have other board members make their voices heard about this. We aren't allowed to vote on it. We aren't allowed to discuss it. We've got to sit here and let public, people in the public can't have a say in the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting. I have to wait till the end of the meeting. Well, we never know what the end of the meeting is, so if you have a life outside of this room, you don't know when to show up to have public comment. So in effect, it's taking your voice away, and I object to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a like, a comment about the public comment, and I believe that we should return to that. And in the future, I believe that, you know, that's being that that's such an important item to me. I mean, when I was out there, I spent a lot of time at the podium, and if I hadn't been allowed to do that, I might not be here right now because it just, it is very important to everyone in this room, I'm quite sure, to have public comment. And it isn't going to hurt us to listen to it twice. It really isn't. And so that's my opinion on that one. Okay, this one is going to take a little bit more time. You know, we're not going to always have ARPA money, and we're going to have to probably come to a time when we have to tighten our belts again, which could be soon. We don't know. So I think one of the places we can start would be when I get to the end of this explanation. It's kind of a little history. In 2017, when Lemon Valley flooded, and we had a disaster. I mean, it was horrible. Even our governor at the time came out to Tupelo Street and Earp Road, and he had tears in his eyes. It was that bad. And he's a pretty tough guy. So nobody, we just weren't getting anything done. And so I thought, okay. John Slaughter sent me to the legislative session, and it was in early March that year. And I, Lemon Valley, and I nagged at him a lot. And finally, he conceded, and he said, okay, all right. So he took us, took me to our lobbyist in Washington DC at the time. And that lobbyist took hold, answered my questions, contacted all the necessary governmental agencies, and we got the barrier. That's what a lobbyist is supposed to do, is do the work of the people when it's needed, when we can't handle the job ourselves and we need help. That's exactly what happened. As soon as that had happened, there was immediate disagreement that I had done something wrong, almost, and they fired our lobbyist. Only one person. That was a unilateral thing, too. And then we ended up with Porter Group. And I thought, okay, well, you know, this is the way things go. And I kept watching and watching. And as time went on, I needed some things for Lemon Valley. One was elevations of homes, and I had done all my homework. And I brought all that information to Porter Group, who was our lobbyist. It was totally ignored. Nothing got done. And, you know, it was all engineered. Everything was done, even preliminary approvals from the governmental agencies. Then the next step was, okay, so we got to find some other way to prevent Lemon Valley from flooding. So I got together with an engineer that had been offering some help. We did a map, had all the engineering, and the same situation with a reservoir. And I brought that to Porter Group. Nothing happened. And I just watched Porter Group for all these years, and Porter Group charges us a lot more than our old lobbyist. And I think, you know, maybe, maybe he's, our Porter Group is a little bit prejudiced against Lemon Valley or District 5 or whatever it is, but the people are who we're supposed to be getting help for. That's who we represent in this world of politics. And so I think I'd like to get back to where we could go get help, where they would listen and do the job that we expect them to do. Just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. DA Edwards, I have you signed in.
Yeah, I just want to put on the record, this is a fine line, and this is difficult for you all as members of a public body, to put enough background on the record to request an item, for example, to come back on a future agenda. But I want to remind you, please use your judgment on this and try as much as you can, in fact, avoid getting into, you know, full advocacy one way or another on an issue. If you want an item on an agenda, then this item is for you to say, I would like an item on the agenda where we're going to discuss, you know, whether we continue a contract with a particular consultant or something like that. I hate doing this. I feel awkward doing this right now, and I don't mean to step over anyone, but I just need to remind you that that line is a fine one, and the item is described as announcements, reports, and updates, and requests for information or topics for future agendas. So please keep that in the back of your mind as you're talking on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that your role is to guide this board and ensure that we don't get ourselves into legal trouble, especially with open meeting law. So I really appreciate that guidance. I think that will help all of us. I see Commissioner Garcia is signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last time I mentioned May was Mental Health Awareness Month, and things are also winding down for Older Americans Month, too, since this is the last meeting. I thought I would kind of just talk about it again. But first off, I just wanted to congratulate all of the Washoe County Senior Services staff for an incredible job, the volunteers, the partnering agencies, everybody that was involved with hosting the, I don't know, probably hundreds of different events and topics scheduled during the month of May. And earlier this month, I wrote an article to help shine the light on senior isolation and the negative effects it has in our physical well-being, our mental health, our emotional well-being. And Ryan Crane from Senior Services helped provide me with some of that data, and I wanted to say thank you to him, and also for providing all of the Older Americans Month in both English and Spanish this year, online, and I really appreciated that. The data surrounding suicide for folks that are 65 years or older is extremely alarming, and it's twice the national average here in Washoe County. And I wanted to bring that up today as the end of May is upon us. And I didn't just want to write about senior isolation. I wanted to actually try to do something personally in efforts to combat that. And instead of people always expecting, us always expecting, and I mean us, local government, for folks to come to us, I decided to try to take a little bit of a different approach and go to them. And I wanted to say thank you to the commission's support team for helping me organize and get out into a variety of communities this month in Sun Valley, in Reno, in Sparks. It was incredible, the folks that shared stories and concerns about housing and prescription drugs and isolation and just overall access to resources. Perhaps the most beautiful part was they came forward with some really great ideas, too, and so it just made me realize how important it is for us to get out, listen to those stories, go to them, and be more cognizant about the ongoing issues that are taking place throughout the year, not just during the month of May. So overall, just a big thank you to our staff here in Washoe County.
And that's a great article. If folks haven't had a chance to read it, so thank you for sharing that, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriola, have you signed in?
I just wanted to share that yesterday I had the absolute pleasure of attending REMZA in terms of celebrating EMS Week and the celebration of all of the heroes that do so much in our community. And obviously, it was very emotional in terms of the tragic loss of life that occurred with the folks who were on the craft that crashed. But it was really an amazing opportunity to celebrate the real heroes in our community, and those are the first responders and those who give their time and energy. And in this case, the biggest gift they could give was their life. So I really was moved by it. And I also attended a really amazing opportunity at the Nevada Prayer Breakfast. It was really lovely to have different cultures express their way of prayer, and the whole community coming together was, again, a very emotional gift that I hope I can bring back some thoughts on that piece. But it really was a gift, and I just really wanted to say thank you for that opportunity on both of those fronts. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in.
I've got no further comments.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Andriola, thank you so much also for representing Washoe County at both of those events. We really appreciate it. I just have a few things. I had an opportunity to give a proclamation for the Salvation Army at the Aces Ball Game last week, and they do incredible work for our community. Obviously, a lot of it is faith-based, but they also do rehabilitation services. And many of the people that they help come from our jails, and they also come from our CARES campus. And those gentlemen in their rehabilitation services came to the game, and they were so excited. And so it was just a joy to be part of that. And I also had the Incline Village-Crystal Bay Mobility Hub Committee. That's something that will eventually come before this board to look at, you know, when the time comes, you know, zoning and site-specific information. But we're looking at alternatives for the site that the TTD, the Tahoe Transportation District, purchased at the old elementary school site. And so if folks in Incline Village have a property that they would like to have TTD look at in Incline Village on State Route 28, I'm doing a, I'll call on that. And so our next meeting will be June 26th, and we'll be looking at those locations. So more to come to this board on that. And then I just wanted to outline other ways that people can reach out to this board. You can email this board through the Clerk or through the county commission before the board if you have questions or if you would like to make public comment. You certainly can reach out to Washoe 311. You can call your county commissioner. All of our cell phones are on the county website, or you can email us. So there are many ways to get involved with the county commission and make sure that your voice is heard. So I just want to make sure that folks know about that. So with that, Mr. Manager, will you please lead us into item four?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of items.
Oh, yes, please. What are your announcements?
The first is that coming up on June 14th, which is Flag Day, as we all know, we will be celebrating not only Flag Day, but the 150th anniversary of our historic Washoe County Courthouse in downtown Reno. So a big thank you to Judge Barry Breslow and the Second Judicial Court for making this happen. I hope everybody can join us. It's Wednesday from noon to 2:00 PM for tours of the historic courthouse and light refreshments. The second announcement is that tomorrow, here in the atrium, I'm sorry, Wednesday also, here in the atrium of our Ninth Street, Building A, Senator Rosen's office will be having a map viewing of the Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act, or the Lands Bill, proposed maps. They'll be displayed here for public input. That'll be Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the atrium here again on Ninth Street. There will not be a presentation. This is an opportunity for those who are not necessarily able to access this information online to actually come see it in person. There will be comment cards so that folks can provide comment on the maps. And attendees, excuse me, and the comments will be deposited in a box and passed on along with any input that folks that do access the maps online provide. And the maps can be found at the landsbill.org website. Those are my two announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and my apologies for almost skipping over you. Could you please lead us into item four?
Item four is an appearance and presentation by Kelly Etchavaria, Emergency Management Administrator, on the Green Recovery portion of the COVID-19, 2021 Recovery Act Plan. The Recovery Act Action Plan is a tool utilized to ensure the recovery, health, has identified goals and objectives, and is utilizing appropriate strategies to accomplish those goals. Green Recovery consisted of strategies to support objectives that foster business continuity within Washoe County and build back better. So in chambers today, we have Ms. Etchavaria.
Thank you. Welcome, and thank you for leading us into the pledge.
Thank you. Yes, that was a surprise. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I've been waiting a long time to talk about this, so I'm grateful for the opportunity. I'll just jump right into it. I put together a bit of a recovery, high-level overview, and then I'll dive deeper into the green, green aspect of that. So just very high-level authorities and NRS that provide us the opportunity then to work on recovery in emergency management, as well as at the federal level and the state. So typically, this is how emergency management goes. You know, there's preparedness, prevention, response, recovery, mitigation. I really hate that they're usually in a circle of some sort because they're all happening at the same time. So it's a little misleading to think that it's a cycle. But today, we're talking about that one side of recovery, right there. And I apologize, there's a lot going on. We can blame FEMA for this slide, but it's just to show that, you know, typically, a disaster will occur. And I recognize that, you know, COVID was a little bit different and kind of wonky as applied to this slide. But usually, recovery starts during response. We don't wait for an event to be over in order to start working on that. There's short-term recovery, intermediate, and long-term as well. And we were able to identify, and I'll get into it a little bit more, but like items that are short-term, we were able to complete very quickly, items that were more intermediate, and then long-term as well. So we set up in kind of a different structure. In a lot of incidents, we'll use FEMA's recovery support functions. And we did do that, but we put them in different boxes, so to speak. And it just is what worked for us for this specific incident. So our recovery plan is guidance that we use, but it's tweakable so that we are better able to respond to each individual incident, because no two are ever the same. So Kate Thomas was the recovery director. I was the recovery manager, and then we had support groups. Kate Thomas worked with advisory boards, and then I worked directly with our individual groups. So we broke them down into economic and business and workforce support, which we worked with Assistant County Manager Dave Solero on that, community support services, which was led by Andrea S. from the Health District. Katrina Peters took on Housing and Human Services for a period of time, and then Bethany Drysale worked on Government, Education, and Policy, and each one of these groups within those categories. So we wanted to make sure that we are reaching out to all different kinds of members of our community to make sure we had input from them on the objectives and goals that we were trying to achieve. So we created a Recovery Action Plan, or a RAP, if you will. And it's really a tool to track our project and our progress and make sure that we're staying on task and accomplishing our goals to support our community. So we broke down geographic area, positions, goals, objectives, strategies, and worked through those, met weekly with our Green Recovery Team, and monthly with our overall Recovery Action Team. So we identified three goals: to promote the physical and mental health and financial well-being of residents; to facilitate business continuity and resilience within Washoe County and partner organizations; to return to a more normal state by integrating disaster risk reduction measures into the revitalization of livelihoods, economies, and the environment. And that was the build-back-better aspect of things. And then learn from our organizational response to the pandemic in order to better prepare for a similar event in the future. We say, let no disaster go to waste, and by that, we mean let's learn from our mistakes and try to do better next time. So within that, we had five objectives, and we broke them down within each of those goals. I have at the bottom improved communication with the public because that really went across all of the goals. Green Recovery really fell under goal number two, under foster business continuity within Washoe County and build back better. So it was the build-back-better aspect of things. So when we started to kind of break out Green Recovery, we looked at what was happening globally, as well as throughout the nation, and took best practices. That's what we do in emergency management. We're really good at that. And we found not a lot of jurisdictions were focusing on this green aspect of things, or calling it that, whatever you want to call it. They just weren't. And it was really interesting to us because globally, they were. So there was a gap happening. And we looked at what that might mean for us. So initially, when the pan- initially, when the pandemic began, so to speak, my office looked at our hazard mitigation plan, because we have infectious disease identified in that plan. And we looked at what are the mitigation action items identified in that plan as well. And there was one item, and it was improve air quality. And so I wasn't here when we created the plan, so I really questioned that. What does that mean, "improve air quality?" Very quickly found out. I called our air quality department, and they worked with our office to understand that, you know, worse air quality meant an increased likelihood of contracting respiratory disease. And then if you did contract it, then your symptoms would be exacerbated. So the quality of the air that we're breathing would directly impact a respiratory illness and the population. And so we wanted to look at a couple of things. One, how do we improve air quality? And how do we support our air quality division within the Health District in achieving their goals? But also, what impacts did we have in our region that weren't necessarily fitting into the other goals identified in the recovery action plan? And so that's why you see, like, strengthen food security in here along, that's not an air quality issue, but that's why it's in here as well. So there were five goals. One, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Two, enhance resilience and mitigate climate change impacts. Three, strengthen food security and increase access to healthy foods. Four, invest in equitable multimodal transportation infrastructure. And five, invest in an urban forestry program. And I'll dive deeper into those. But for each one, we broke out these eight items. So what are the strategies we're going to use to achieve these goals? Just an overview of each one, the actions that we can take to achieve those goals, implementation and budget, what does that look like? And you can see that off to the side on the right, degree of effort and degree of impact. Then we also provided a timeline of how long is this short-term? Is it intermediate, or is it a long-term effort in order to achieve this goal? Who are our partners throughout the community that can help us achieve this? What are possible funding sources that we can use to implement these and achieve our goals? And then any additional resources, and then a relevant example if applicable. So for the first one, some of these items, you know, we were already working on within the county, or our strategic planning team was already working towards documenting how we needed to achieve this goal. And we wanted to document that ourselves and really tie in how these intersect. So the county is working on monitoring and reducing our GHG, our greenhouse gas emissions. But we wanted to document that for the purposes of this recovery plan as well, because if something came forward through recovery that could support that, we wanted to make sure we were tying in and having those conversations and supporting our community partners in achieving their goals, because it was also our goal. So that's something that's currently in progress. A couple of these have already been completed, and the fourth and fifth ones, we're pursuing in FY '24. But you can see, they're low-cost, low-effort, high to medium, some low-impact on the right-hand side there. This one is particularly near and dear to my heart. I've mentioned to the Commission I could speak about mitigation for days. But, and we just approved number one. So one of the things that we realized in talking with all of our community partners at Truckee River Flood, at parks, at air quality, was all of these tied together. They really do. You know, the trees that we're planting in parks impact air quality, and the types of trees can impact, you know, resilience to fire. Some of them are more drought and fire-resistant than others. And, you know, more vegetation can solidify the soil, which then impacts flooding aspects. And so, you know, all of these subject matter experts came together throughout this process and were able to talk through overlapping things. And so one of them is the defensible space and wildfire programs that we have. We were able to identify, you know, that they're not all equal and equitable for everyone. And so that's a goal that we wanted to pursue for our community. So everyone, seniors, lower-income neighborhoods, all have access to the same type of program to improve their defensible space, which if our community is more resilient against fire, then we won't have as much smoke, hopefully. And then that will facilitate, these programs will facilitate conversations with California as well, and partnerships across state lines. A lot of the smoke that we get comes from California. Now, I can't stop that, but I can try to work on what we have going on in our own community. So that's something we wanted to include as And then strengthen food security and increase access to healthy foods. Obviously, food security was a huge issue as, you know, businesses shut down and access to programs were reduced. We saw an uptick in reliance on the food bank, school programs adjusted, pivoted to be able to still provide services. We wanted to make sure that the Health District had the support they needed for their WIC programs, senior services and Meals on Wheels had what they needed, and that we were documenting our support for each one of them. You know, ARPA funds were able to support the food bank a bit through this, but it was facilitating those conversations with community reinvestment to ensure that no one was being missed in any of this recovery, that we were supporting who we needed to support so that our community could eat. Invest in equitable multimodal transportation infrastructure. So that one was really important. I do want to touch on the second one, which is Smart Trips commuter program. That's something that we're working on with HR. One impact of that includes having food onsite at county facilities. So we've already kind of started that, right? Because we have the cafeteria or café across the complex here. And the next step is to tie in with RTC and their shared trip programs and offer that to employees. So that one is very exciting. We are already investing in green infrastructure, such as EV infrastructure on county properties. That's something we were able to have conversations with at the federal level. When mitigation funding for COVID came out, we said, "Okay, well, this is our approved plan, improve air quality. Can we do EV infrastructure through that?" And unfortunately, in that instance, the answer was no. But then we were able to say, "Okay, FEMA mitigation funding does not fund this particular thing. Let's pivot to find a different funding source." And so now, we're able to work with our Sustainability Manager to do that and to push those initiatives forward, and show that it's also supporting our recovery plan as well as our strategic plan. All right. And establish an urban forestry program. Also, very exciting. We work with the City of Reno. Their urban forester, Matt Basile, joined us in this, our own County Parks Department as well. And we are making a pretty good headway on this one as well. We hired an arborist. Very exciting. You know, we're continuing to work with City of Reno. We had Arbor Day just happened. Told we gave away 25 trees. We were able to plant some at Rancho San Rafael. We had a presence in Gerlach for that as well. So we're expanding our efforts in each of these, which then, like I say, tie into air quality, resilience against fires, urban heat islands. All of those have multiple impacts across the board. So it's very exciting to see the county investing in an urban forestry program. I think it'll, having experts on board like an arborist will help save money in the long run, because you're not having to do the same amount of investment on trees, replacement, that sort of thing. If you've ever spoken to Matt from City of Reno, it's very exciting to talk about, and things you would never think about as far as trees go. But, so it was good to be able to work with our community partners like that to help boost our program across the field. All right. And then, you know, I did also want to mention that we worked very closely with DRI in creating this recovery action plan. They did put out, you know, we had a number of wildfires happening in California throughout the pandemic, and a lot of smoke coming into our area. So they were able to do a lot of studies and publish those studies, and have been nationally recognized for them, on the impact of smoke and air quality, which really helped drive our green focus on this. We have spoken throughout the planning process with partners in different states, at the International Association of Emergency Managers, with FEMA. And they, you know, confirmed this isn't really being done in a lot of places in our country. It's very seldom that it's, the focus has been so strategic like this, and so tied in with community members, and focused on air quality. And they were very impressed. Specifically, FEMA Region 9 was very impressed and excited to see what we're doing. So I want you to know that that feedback has come back down to us. And I think it's amazing that our community partners kind of rallied around and provided input, and we're able to see this through. And so thank you again for allowing me to share this with you today.
Wow, that's so impressive, Ms. Etcheverria. Yet again, Washoe County being on the cutting edge of things. And I know when I went to the FEMA Emergency Management Institute training, was it last year?
Yes.
In May of last year, with the manager and a lot of our staff and all of our multi-jurisdictional partners. One of the really interesting segments we did as part of that training was recovery. And how do you reimagine your community? And one of the exercises we did was that earthquake that then turned into a flood, which sadly could be something that happens in our community. So making sure that we really look at how we can prevent these things and recover in a really green and sustainable way. So I applaud you for that. I will go to my board, see if there's any board comments. I don't see anyone signed in. Commissioner Garcia?
Did you make up "Build Back Better"? Was that your brainchild?
I wish I could claim that. No, I think that was a federal thing.
Oh, I like it. I'm stealing it. What I really liked about the recovery aspect of this action plan is the focus on the social determinants of health. You know, we're looking at all constituents, how they're born, how they learn, how they grow, where they worship, how they age. All of those pieces are really, like, embedded into this, into your goals. And I just really wanted to applaud you for that, and thank you for taking such a holistic approach.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got some questions and some comments. On green recovery, one of the things that I'd like to see maybe as an addition to this is looking into night lights and the brightness of the communities. And it interferes with bird migration and wildlife habitat, and quality of life, and sleeping. And ultimately, all these lights you see in the middle of the night out in the country are, you know, using up fossil fuels for the most part. So might be a way to incorporate that whole dark skies, you know, night light pollution, kind of get that into this program if we could. That's the first comment. Then on the COVID-19 Recovery Action Plan we're now rolling, I've got several questions. For fostering business continuity within the Washoe County Build Back Better, the Community Recovery Advisory Board, the Government Recovery Advisory Board, who's on these boards? Do we have people sitting on these boards now? Are these folks, are these boards still functioning from the COVID time? Or do we need people to man these boards? What's taking place with that?
No, these boards are no longer in place. They were more advisory boards to the recovery director, which in this case was Kate Thomas.
So if we move forward with this program, we're going to have other seats on boards that might need volunteers? Is that possible, or is that going to happen?
No. These items are ongoing, I guess, some of these tasks and goals that we're working on. But we're no longer building this out. It's more of a sustainment and support phase.
So as I look at these charts, though, the organizational charts, are there people now in place on these other than, I see Dave Solero in the audience. Maybe I can ask him a few questions about this. But are there boards now, sitting boards?
No.
With any of this now?
No.
Okay, all right. Very good.
No, and maybe I should clarify that in recovery, our goal is to support organizations that are functioning during blue skies, so non-disaster times. So once those entities, for example, the Health District and their WIC program, once they're able to maintain that and function that on their own, then we step back from that, because we're ensuring that they're capable of doing just their everyday blue-sky activities. And so once that is capable of occurring, then recovery as a whole takes a step back and allows them to continue to function.
Okay. As far as "Build Back Better," do we have any numbers on how many businesses closed during COVID? And how many business licenses are, are business licenses back up for the county now? Is there any correlation between what was shut down and what's opened up now as far as "Build Back Better" and sustainable businesses?
I do not specifically have those numbers.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Andriola?
I just wanted to thank you and your team and the whole county for having such a forward way of thinking and putting us in a blue-sky position, but always ready if that changes. And I think it really is a concerted effort from a community standpoint to engage all partners. And I just really wanted to recognize that it takes a lot of work to do that. And so having that infrastructure in place so that those functions can maintain themselves and engage those community partners to empower them to do that through that education process. So thank you so much for all you do, and for the county, and everyone who really may not understand how important emergency management is until there's an emergency. And hopefully there will not be one. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would just also like to say that I really appreciate that you incorporated transportation as part of this. It's so important that we have resilient transportation. And I know that my constituents in Incline Village and Crystal Bay and in Verde have major concerns about evacuation, and a lot of that is resilient transportation infrastructure. And so the fact that the county is focusing on that is incredible. So great job. If I don't have any other commissioner comments, I'm not seeing any other. This is not an action item, so we will be in touch, and we really appreciate you and your team's efforts.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Now we will go into item five, donations. Commissioner Garcia, would you like to give us a summary of our donations today?
Yes, Madam Chair. So 5A1, thank you to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for donating a manufactured home to support our roads crew in Gerlach. This is a good example of how our different departments can lean on each other for support. 5B1, we want to thank the Friends of the CAC, which is the Child Advocacy Center, Mr. Lai from Chasin Quality Chocolates located in Spanish Springs. And if you haven't had an opportunity to tour the CAC, they handle, with some amazing staff from the DA's office, some of the most severe physical and sexual abuse cases we have in Washoe County. It's an incredible lift that they have, and this is a very much appreciated donation from those two bodies. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve these two donations.
Okay. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay. With a motion to accept the donations from Commissioner Garcia and a second from Commissioner Andriola, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, I think that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move into our consent items. And I just wanted to point out some really great consent items that we'll be considering today before we hear our public comment on this item. 6E- 6E1, Commissioner Andriola is donating $23,500 to the Nevada Water Innovation Institute and also $10,000 to the Nevada Peer Support Network. Thank you so much, Commissioner Andriola. Do you have anything to say about that?
Thank you. I hope, if it's possible, I do have the head of the Nevada Water Innovative Institute, and I'd like to, if I could, have Dr. Krishna Pagia come forward and really share what they do. I also have Derek Reed, who is the president of the Nevada Peer Support. Maybe he can follow to share what they do. And I also would like to put on the record that I had the absolute pleasure of speaking with both of them. And they have agreed to acknowledge that the funds will be used as designated and come back within a year to report how those funds were used and the impact they had on their particular programs and mission. So if I may, Madam Chair, can I call Dr. Pagia?
Yes, let's, yes.
When it's appropriate.
No, that makes sense. And then I think we just need, who's with the Nevada Peer Support Network?
Derek Reed.
Derek Reed.
The president, Derek Reed.
Okay, great. And if the clerk, I'm hoping she can get that in her system. So Dr. Pagia, can you please come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. For the record, my name is Krishna Pagila. I am a professor at University of Nevada Reno and director of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. I'm here with my colleague, Dr. Laura Hock. She's a research scientist of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. First of all, I want to thank you for the generous grant to the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. This enables us to do lots of things that we couldn't be able to do without your support. And I want to acknowledge the entire county commission. You have been really looking forward when you allowed the county to be part of the founding members of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. About five years ago, a little bit over five years ago, I believe Chair Hill, you were at the five-year celebration at UNR. And I know Commissioner Herman has been in many of the hearings, including at the Western Regional Water Commission, and you've been a strong supporter of that. And what this Nevada Water Innovation Institute is that we are a regional collaboration founded by six of the local entities. Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, Tamwa, Western Regional Water Commission, and the Nevada Department of Transportation's Tamwater Bureau. The idea was to create an entity at the university to address regional water needs, regional needs in water infrastructure, to make us more water resilient and water secure. And while doing that, we do things in a way that we innovate in the water sector and also educate workforce. Case in point, Laura Hock, she has been working on many of the projects we've been doing at, in the Nevada Water Innovation Institute with support from the six founding partners. She got her PhD. She stayed in the community and now she's doing lots of cool things, including the COVID-19 monitoring that you have supported with the inter-agency collaboration with City of Reno and Sparks. And in fact, Laura has been instrumental in setting up samplers all over the region at schools, at senior care facilities, and at travel facilities, and collecting information which we provide to the Washoe County Health District and all the regional leaders to look at how COVID-19 is prevalent or spreading in the community. And this was the only information that was available when testing wasn't very prevalent, that is, looking at wastewater from the sewer without interfering with any public, what's the level of the COVID-19 disease in the community. So that's an example of one activity. And we've been also working on how we make our region water resilient with the county Community Services Department, Mr. Smith, Matt Wayne Smith, was sitting right next to me. And in fact, the county was the original.
Thank you. Absolutely. And then the representative from the Nevada Peer Support Network, if you could state your name for the record.
Good morning. Derek Reed, president of the Nevada Peer Support Network and also battalion chief for Truckee Meadows Fire and Rescue. This is Charlie Tobano, one of our retirees, fire and EMS retiree. And he's one of our project managers for Incident Support Vehicle. Thank you for having us today and allow us to share what we do with the Nevada Peer Support Network, helping our first responders in the mental health and wellness category. The goal is to provide mental health and wellness resources to our first responders so they can live their very best lives possible in active duty and in retirement. In 2019, we lost one of our firefighters to suicide. And it was devastating to our department. We just stood up a peer support program and we found that we were ineffective because we were all grieving and it left a tremendous hole. This never gets easy. Tyler was loved. He, from the exterior, looked like he was thriving in life, his career. He had a solid family. And that devastated our department. Fast forward, I realized that we had to reach out into, into the community and to our other first responder partners to provide that peer support for us. I didn't, basically what we did is we had a meeting at the Regional Training Center and I said, okay, enough is enough. You work for this department, you work for this agency, we need to drop those boundaries and we need to work together and vet first responder relevant resources, that being, you know, trained peer supporters, clinicians that are culturally competent, trauma-informed, and chaplains. Kind of a three-pronged approach. Initially, it was started off as a website platform where all the resources were put there and everybody knew what was there. There were phone numbers there for other peer support groups. And we had meetings and we developed a relationship to be able to communicate when something bad happens. That expanded into the Resiliency Center that we have now that's on East Liberty. We offer mental health and wellness classes like mindfulness meditation, yoga, resiliency classes. We still do crisis intervention, which would be critical incident stress debriefings, diffusing. We even facilitate members getting to inpatient treatment centers by facilitating conversations between insurance companies and the provider. We also have an Incident Support Vehicle that Charlie runs. He'll respond to greater alarm incidents, law enforcement, fire, or otherwise, to provide peer support, refreshments, nutrition, and they're amazing group. We thank you for the consideration that you're giving us for this donation. And if you have any questions, I can kind of tell you where that money would be going towards. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to also, no, you're fine. Oh, y'all can be seated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to point out 6E2, Commissioner Garcia is donating $5,000 to Redirect Athletics, $2,500 to Black Wall Street, and $2,500 to Latino Arte and Culture. And Commissioner Garcia, do you have anything to say on those items? No? Okay, then I think that we have folks representing these organizations. So is Marcel Legrone here? Legrone, excuse me.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marcel Legrone. I am the founder of Redirect Athletics. Excuse my voice, I've been yelling at my son's track meet all weekend. What we do at Redirect Athletics, we outreach for kids. We go search for kids and bring them into our gym. And we have a boxing program that we give them those outlets to do whatever they need to do with. And when I say whatever they need to do, it's not always punching things and it's not always learning how to fight. Fighting is different than boxing. So we teach them how to be resilient. We teach them how to react when necessary. We teach them how to defend themselves because that is a part of life. And we teach them also how to walk through life and take the blows that come with them. We, I go to schools daily. I try to be in, I'm in about five or six schools right now just to touch bases with kids that go to our schools, I mean, that come to our gym. And so, with that program, after we're done with our workouts, sometimes we have a kid that needs help with reading, we have coaches sit down and read with them or sit down and help kids do homework. We have hygiene products that we donate to kids. We have waters and juices and just sometimes the small things that kids don't have. When they come to a gym, a granola bar, things like that, to get them through workouts or through the day. With the funds that'll be donated from Senator Garcia or Commissioner Garcia, we would put this towards our go bags. And so, what our go bags are, is they're bags with boxing gloves. They come with a brand new pair of boxing gloves, wraps, a pair of boxing shoes, and a mouthpiece. And these things are just to make these kids feel like they have their own. One of the things that I realized growing up, when you, when you look different than everybody else that's doing something, it kind of makes you quit what you're doing. If I'm on the football field and I have to have on tennis shoes and every other kid gets to have on cleats, then why do I want to be there? It feels like I'm not a part of this group. And so, we try to make every kid feel like they are something special and make them be a part of everything that they're doing. Though we have gloves that we donate when they come in, if they're first come in, we give them a set of gloves to use. We want them to have their own so that they feel like they are their own person. Aside from that, we help kids learn. Mental health is amazing. And being aware of what these kids are going through. So we don't just work out every day. Probably twice out of the month, we'll sit down with all of our coaches. We'll bring all the parents in and we'll sit down in the group and have a discussion as far as what's going on in life with kids and what's going on in life with parents. And I have parents give kids feedback and coaches give kids feedback and kids give adults feedback on as far as life and what's helping them through life. So we're just here to help serve everybody in our community. I don't like to say that I work with kids at risk because I feel like every kid in America is at risk. So we welcome any kid that's available. So that's who we are.
Thank you very much. And from Black Wall Street, Donald Griffin.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, thank you. Donald Griffin, co-founder and director of Black Wall Street. I'm going to talk about the outreach that we do. We team up with innovation high schools. We have a total of 13 students that we teach evidence-based training, take them into elementaries, middle schools, and allow them to do the peer-to-peer support. We also have seven different locations of Narcan boxes where we take old newspaper stands and turn them into Narcan boxes. And we take those students out there to fill those Narcan boxes and teach them evidence-based training of how to use the Narcan CPR. We provide over 5,000 after-school sack lunches to these schools. We provide bus passes, thanks to Ms. Hill, to the students that are having a hard time getting back and forth to school. We also have mental health days where we take them on hikes. We took last year 170 students up to ziplining with Forever 14 where we practice, not practice, but we do suicide prevention, understanding when we break off into peer groups, let the children get their thoughts off their minds, what they can express to their parents. So I'll let Romar, co-founder and president, speak about the other half.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Romar Tolliver. Pleasure. Our mission at Black Wall Street, as you know, is to provide resources and services to the black and underserved in our community. And we do that through various of, you know, ways of engaging with the community. Just being a community support platform, us being a diaper bank and a food pantry, just being able to service and help the underserved families in our community has been a great fulfillment. We appreciate the support that we receive from, you know, the commission board as well as those in the community. And we just look to being a sustaining program in the community. That's our goal and mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for Latino Arte and Culture, Mario De La Rosa.
My name is Mario De La Rosa. I execute the director with Latino Arte and Culture. I would like to thank Commissioner Mari Luz Garcia for her donation to Latino Arte and Culture. We are the, we are one of only a few Latino 51C3 organizations, nonprofits in Northern Nevada, and the only one that works in the arts and culture. We started our work in the arts in 2003 when we started the first Latino theater group in Northern Nevada. And during 20 years, we had created, produced, organized, and presented many manifestations of the Latino arts and culture. According to a survey by Americans for the Arts, we are an organization that makes the community more desirable by creating pride in where we live and work. We unify neighborhoods from different backgrounds. We infuse lives with joy, pride, and sense of belonging. With our bilingual theater, we attract audiences speaking two different languages. We are capable of having two different cultures with two different backgrounds in the same room at the same time and have them understand and enjoy the same plate. That is bilingual theater. That is diversity. That is inclusion. That's equity and access. Also, we organize three cultural festivals during the year. We attract thousands of attendees with these, we support businesses, development, and we support local jobs. Thank you, Mari Luz Garcia, Commissioner Mari Luz Garcia, for your donation, which will allow us to reach out our goals, which are to keep creating, producing, and presenting the Latinx arts and culture for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with consent items, 6A1 through 6H1, do commissioners have anything they'd like to poll? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see Don Vedder in the audience today and he's here about 6B1. And I think we should allow him to speak a little bit about that. And if not, maybe we could pull that off the agenda and bring it back for full discussion. I know the person managing the golf course couldn't be here today because he had to work on his payroll, but, you know, I think it's important that that person be here to explain the situation a little bit better.
So are you asking to pull that? Because I have him down for public comment.
We do.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think he wants to speak, but I think we should pull it and have further discussion.
Have a discussion? Okay. So with Commissioner Clark's request to pull 6B1, Commissioner Clark, do you want to make a motion for the rest of the consent?
Yes, I make a motion that we pull item 6B1 from the agenda and bring it back to our next meeting.
Oh, are you, well, can we talk about it today and see?
Sure, sure. We can talk about it today. But I do want it to come back for further discussion.
Okay. That sounds good. So we will, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on particular items on consent for the rest of this public comment?
Just general public comment?
Just general? Okay, I'll just have, then let's, let's pull 6B1. We'll have the gentleman who, Mr. Vedder, who is here, come and speak on that item and then we'll come back to the consent. Is he on public comment? I'm not sure.
Are we pulling it out of public comment? I mean, are we pulling it out of consent?
Yes, let's pull that out of consent.
Okay, so we're hearing that now or after consent is over?
Let's, okay, let's just, because we still need public comment for the rest of consent. So let's just do public comment on the rest of consent and then we'll make a motion on the rest of consent. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. First up, we have Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments and handouts in the record per NRS. As you know, the public is not happy that our county commissioners each get $100,000 to donate to nonprofits of their choice. We are already giving enough money to the county. So we object to all of these donations. First of all, of concern is the Latino Art and Culture donation. This will be in June, the LGBTQ whatever-ever agenda. Many in the Hispanic community are pro-family, pro-God, and this is not part of their lifestyle. I'm sure if they knew this was happening, they would have been here today. So we know across the country that many are speaking out. We know that Commissioner Garcia has her doctorate in diversity and equity, and that is pushing the woke agenda. We do not like the woke agenda being pushed by our county commissioners and onto our county. Our county is Americans, the Judeo-Christian Our county is Americans, the Judeo-Christian value system. We do not approve of the woke agenda. We do not approve of the LGBTQ Latino whatever because this is what it means. Secondly, so we know what diverse means by that that statement. How many more woke organizations will Commissioner Garcia reward for getting her elected? The other concern is about the Black Wall Street. I found that they are partners with the Black Panthers. Anybody that knows the Black Panthers should not be funded with our tax dollar. Thank you very much.
My name is Susan Van Ness, for the record, for the permanent record. I was, I have a picture in my phone, which I at this time cannot find. However, it is from Black Wall Street, and they put it on their website. They would, will tutor children, and it's brought to you by the Communist Society of Reno. I just talked to Mr. Tolliver and the other gentleman, and they said that is true. They do bring communist teachers in to teach math. I don't think that our children in Washoe County should be taught communism. So before this money is given, I think this matter should be cleared. They are, they said, yes, they did bring communists in to teach children math. So I'm asking that you discuss this further and maybe not give to them until they clear this up. And Penny is right. I found many Black Panther pictures with Mr. Tolliver and more. So I ask you to please consider this before voting on it, and we'll watch who votes on it. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay, then I am looking for a motion on.
I've got a couple more things that I want to.
Yes.
I didn't get finished. I want to talk about 6B2. And in reading the pay scale of seasonal pool manager at $25 an hour and seasonal lifeguards at $20 an hour to get these positions filled, it's, it's seasonal. I know finding these folks for these, to fill these positions is going to be impossible at community pools. They're very important to our residents. I'm a fiscal conservative, but I'm asking that we pay over market so we can get those staffed. That's on 6B2. And then 6C1. I have a question about this. This is Kate Thomas here. Do we have uniform salary ranges, meaning that some of the staff at the Second Judicial District Court, the county employees, could be making more than the district court judges? I did some quick math in my head. The district court judges haven't got a cost of living raise in a while. Just wanted some clarification. I know this is bookkeeping, but I was at an event Friday night with several judges in attendance, and they were talking about the legislator and how they legislature and how they hope to have a pay raise for district court judges throughout the state. Chief Judge Stiglitz was trying to fill the bench in a, for a seat in Southern Nevada and had to extend the application period twice or three times. I know several judges on Second Judicial District might not be running in 2026, so there will be some benches to fill then. So the question about, about pay increases there and making sure that it's equitable, everybody's being treated properly. Again, I'm worried about some employees making more than the judges over there. And then on F, 6F1, was this on this, was this on the agenda in fall of '22? I just remember Judge Pearson being in front of the BBC, BCC, but didn't have time to watch the meeting. My only question is, how was the TRUP HR Inc. found and what was their charge? So those are the only, those are the questions I have on that was, how do we find this TRUP HR and how much did they charge to do their study? Thank you.
Mr. Manager, can you answer Commissioner Clark's question on 6C1?
6C1?
Yes, sir, or have staff. I know that it looks like we've got someone coming down.
Alicia LaRue is here. She can answer that.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue.
Good morning, Chair. For the record, Alicia LaRue, Court Administrator and Clerk of Court for the Second Judicial District Court. Would you like me to go straight into an answer with respect to the judicial salaries?
Yes, that would be helpful because that's what Commissioner Clark's questions were.
Absolutely. So the district court is unique within the court structure here in Washoe County. The district court is technically a state court, and therefore the judges are actually state employees. Their salaries are statutorily set. There is a current legislative matter. It is AB 15 that is pending in front of the legislature to raise the base salary of the district court judges. Their base salary has not been raised since 2009. This is a conversation that has been had amongst the Second Judicial District Court bench. The item 6C1 that is before you today for a vote, Commissioner Clark, is correct. It will put some district court employee salaries above what the base pay is for some of our judges. The reason for that is, is that as salaries continue to go up for government service employees, if those salaries remain below district court judges, then we are not going to be able to recruit and retain for our upper-level positions amongst the court. We are still very hopeful that AB 15 will be successful this session, and if it is successful, then that pay rate will, the base pay will be adjusted for January 2027.
Great. Commissioner Clark, any questions on that?
Well, thank you for answering those, those questions. I think it's important, you know, when we talk to our, our representative down at the legislator, that we might want to support that particular bill to get the, the judges' a pay raise. I think it's important that the judges, since they haven't had a raise since 2009, that it might be something that we should support as a county to help, help the judges get that raise. Thank you.
And I know that NACO, the board that Commissioner Herman or Vice Chair Herman and I sit on, also supports that. So we've been pushing for that effort, but certainly we can have that discussion later on in the agenda. And Commissioner Clark had a question on 6F1 on Trump HR INC. And it looks like.
Good morning, Madam Chair. James Conway, Court Administrator for Reno Justice Court. With me is Cinda Horning, Court Administrator for Sparks Justice Court. To answer your question, Commissioner Clark, the TRUP company that.
TRUP, there you go.
They were hired by all four courts, well, our two courts on behalf of all four justice courts, who identified that organization by asking the Second Judicial District Court, who previously did their compensation study. The history behind it was, once the county announced its plans regarding the corn fairy compensation study, we inquired into whether or not courts would be included in that study, and were told that courts would not be included in the county study. So that's why we commissioned our own study with, with TRUP HR. And we still worked in close collaboration with the county in conducting that study, but we identified that, that organization specifically because we knew that the Second Judicial District Court had used them in the past. As to the amount that we paid them, I don't want to tell you the, an incorrect amount, I believe, well, do you recall, Cinda, the precise amount?
Cinda Horning, for the record. I want to say the amount was under $26,000. That has not been expended yet, and that did not come out of the general fund. And it was also split amongst the courts.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, may I have a motion for 6A1 through 6H1 minus 6B1? So move. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. May I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. Any questions on the motion to approve the consent items minus 6B1, which we will discuss after this vote? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that's unanimous. Great, thank you very much. And now, Mr. Manager, we will go into 6B1.
6B1 is a recommendation to approve the, the Third Amendment to Golf Management License and Sierra Sage and Services Sierra Sage Golf Course Agreement between Washoe County and the Cal-Maz Golf Management LLC, doing business as Mass Golf Management for full management of Sierra Sage Golf Course. Sierra Sage Golf Course is located at 6355 Silver Lake Road in Reno, Nevada, and Amendment 3 reduces the payment of fees associated with utilizing the effluent water in this, provided by the city of Reno by passing along credit realized by Washoe County properties in the South Truckee Meadows effluent system due to waiver of fees for calendar year 2023 by Resolution 8 R23-02 and any future-year actions by the Board of County Commissioners.
Hello.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. Just a brief, brief amount of background for this item. So as you are aware, Washoe County does operate the Sierra Sage Golf Course under contract with Cal-Maz Golf Management. Mike Mazefary had identified an issue with the sustainability of water in that golf course, brought it forward to Washoe County. The way the water is provided for that golf course in 1990, Washoe County, or sorry, 2009, wasn't that far back, 2009. Actually, I mean, let me, let me back up for one moment. In 1999, Washoe County entered into an agreement with the city of Reno to provide effluent water to our North Valleys Regional Park as well as the golf course. That was in an effort to allow Washoe County to sell water rights that we had in the North Valleys to be able to expand the North Valleys Park. So Washoe County has indeed expanded the North Valleys Regional Park by quite a lot based on the proceeds from that water right sale. Part of the agreement with city of Reno was that we would provide for payment of the operation and maintenance of the effluent water line system. So over the last number of years, we have been paying the city of Reno, actually in the error amount, the city for the first year was going to provide a cost of $40,000, and then we would true up the actual operation and maintenance costs for the water. That actually never occurred, and the city of Reno continued to bill Washoe County $40,000 as a portion to the golf course. And so that's what we had in our agreements with Cal-Maz Golf. This error was identified by the city of Reno in roughly 2017, and we started paying the other cost that was associated with that rate, which is the lowest irrigation rate that Tomah charges in the same area. So we're paying essentially an irrigation rate for our North Valleys Park as well as the Sierra Sage Golf Course. This has put a strain on the ability for the golf course to continue to operate. We have an agreement with the golf operator that essentially says that Washoe County will continue to try to negotiate with the city of Reno and understand the actual costs of water. The city of Reno is going through that process with their rate study in the North Valleys. During this whole time, Washoe County at our South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, by resolution of this board in January of this year, reduce our effluent costs to zero. So trying to get creative on how we assist the golf course asset, which is Washoe County asset in the north. Again, these are two separate sewer systems, so it gets a little complicated. The city of Reno is operating their sewer system. They have to, you know, figure out how to make sure all of their costs are met. In the South Truckee Meadows, we're doing the same thing as Washoe County. But I've identified a potential opportunity whereby our water rate for South Valleys Park could essentially be transitioned to the golf operator in the north. We've budgeted for the, for the cost. We are not going to expend that cost in this fiscal year, the current or the future fiscal year. And so we'd like to amend the golf course agreement to essentially reduce the rate that we charge the golf course by roughly $30,000, which is the rate we are not going to be paying in South Truckee Meadows. Now, it's not equal. It's not all these other sorts of things. It, it does get a little messy. You know, we need to make sure we account for it appropriately, but this will allow us now to have the discussion with the city of Reno to potentially do the same thing with their golf, or their park lands in South Truckee Meadows that are not paying for effluent water to give us a little bit better deal on effluent water in the North Valleys for the golf course and the North Valleys Park. It's a little complicated, but it was a, you know, I thought a fairly elegant solution on trying to get to someplace while we're trying to negotiate water rights with the city of Reno. So before you is a recommendation to amend the golf course agreement to reduce essentially the cost of water by the $30,000 a year that Washoe County will be saving at our park in the South Valleys.
Great. Thank you for that. And I agree. I think it was very creative. Do, do the commissioners who are signed in, do you want to speak before the public commenter or would you like me to?
I just had a quick question.
Okay, Commissioner Clark.
As I read this, this is, this is an agreement for, for just one year. Is that correct?
So the way I've tried to style this is, you know, currently we know we have this rate holiday for this year. If there are future rate holidays, we would do the same thing in the future. But currently, the only, you know, this year is the only one for certain unless this board takes future action in South Valleys.
And so my thought, just, just my thought is, a golf course, the sod, the trees, whatever out there needs to be watered, one year, I mean, we've got to look at long-term, a long-term situation. This is just kind of kicking the can down the road. We'll be here next year discussing the same thing. So I'd like to see a way to figure out how to, and this is my, my personal view, is a long-term, golf courses are long-term investments. You can't turn the water on one year and off the next. And, and so that's, that's just my concern is the timeframe on this. Thank you.
And I think that there's, in this time, hopefully, we can put some pressure on Reno because I think that that's really what staff is wanting us to do. So hopefully, we can do a long-term agreement with Reno, putting in their equal share, is what I'm hearing from staff.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is actually, you know, this is the, the beginning of that discussion. We've been having it with, with the city of Reno. Obviously, they've got to meet their operational costs, and so that's their struggle right now, is understanding what those actual operational costs are. So the first piece should hopefully be done later this summer, that they will actually have their operation costs associated with the effluent system. Now, this is, you know, as the North Valleys grow, they have more customers now, and so their, their system is starting to become a little bit more mature. Initially, for, you know, a number of years, Washoe County was the only customer on this system. So we're, we're working through with them. You know, city Reno staff has been fantastic about trying to work through the process with us, but they need to answer some questions for themselves before we can actually get to that longer-term solution.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Herman, I see you signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank our gentleman there, Dave, because he took on my question that I had and has made something of it. I really appreciate that. Took a lot of forethought. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Madam Clerk, can we please call public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Don Vedder, I've worked with Maz Golf Management for the last 12 years as their marketing and communications person. Mike sends his regards. He has to do payroll today for his 80 employees.
That's important.
Yes. First, I just want to thank Dave and the manager's office. This has taken a lot of time out of their busy schedule and we're, but basically, if you can imagine getting a bill that went from $40,000 to $150,000, that's kind of sticker shock. And this $30,000 is really, really appreciated. But that, based upon the last bill we received from the city of Reno, we expect this year's water cost based upon last year's to be $200,000. So that gets us down to $170,000 we're expecting this year. And, and I think I've had discussions with, with Commissioner Clark on this and appreciate that. And I do know that Commissioner Garcia has been briefed on this through the Open Space and Parks Board meeting. We had some discussions on that. So what do we do? What's our next step? We are affordable golf, so we, we don't want to raise rates. We are senior golf. We are junior golf. We are mental health golf through the PGA Hope. So our, we are employing right now a reduction in water use. Ultimately, the pipeline, which was paid for by golf money, I think goes directly to the course, we're going to reduce our use by 30 to 40% this year. we're going to reduce our use by 30% to 40% this year. What that means, and I know Commissioner Herman can understand this, that's going to add about 40 million gallons to Swan Lake. It's counterintuitive. Flood control, adding water. We're trying to be a good partner. So we, that's why we appreciate Dave just trying to work through this. But we don't know the justification for that fee raise. It was never given to us. Real lack of transparency. Where did you come up with this number? And in the original agreement, if you look at Section 8, 8.2 and 8.3, it's, they're bound to that, to that level of transparency. So we're just kind of moving along here, working with the county. And I think, I think you put it rather well, Madam Chairman. Is it, right now, I think the ball's kind of in Reno's court. Can you, can you give us your rationalization so that we can adjust our ability to provide playable, walkable, and affordable golf? So that's, that's our marketing. So we want to, we want to keep all three, not just go one or two out of three. So if you have any questions, and again, Mike sends his regards. He really appreciates the work here. And we want to continue to be a good partner to help with, you know, these, all these issues. Water, water use, recreation, and helping Swan Lake stay, stay low. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that there's work to be done, and certainly, I know that that will be something that I bring up with our Managers and Mayors Meeting, and we'll continue to push on the City of Reno. Commissioner Clark, since you pulled this item, are you ready to make a motion?
A motion to bring this back?
You, you can make that motion. I, I just, I will not support that. I think that we're ready to move forward, and then we can, we have this year to really work on the City of Reno and our relationship with them. But certainly, you can make that motion.
Fair enough. And then we'll, we'll move forward and, and vote on it today and bring it back when it needs to be. But I think we need to focus a lot of attention on this, and for a lot of good reasons. I mean, as Mr. Vedder mentioned, 30, 40 million gallons, extra million gallons of water going back into Swan Lake, a closed basin, is not a good idea, especially with whatever type of carcinogens or whatever they found out there. The more water we put in there, it seems like it pushes this deeper into the aquifer. So, you know, there's a good reason to get this water out and, and use it on the golf course. So let's, let's move forward on the vote on this.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I will take Vice Chair Herman's second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, and I think that carries unanimously. All right, thank you so much. And Madam Vice Chair, are you ready with a block for us today? Putting you on the hot spot, if not, no worries.
I got it.
Okay, cool.
Right, the block, as, as I'm seeing it here, is eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, and 18.
Okay. May I have a second on that block motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on those items?
Do you want them read into the record first?
Yes, let's read them into the record, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Item eight is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Washoe County Incline Village Justice Court Incline Community Center Renovations Project, located at 855 Alder Avenue, Incline Village, Nevada. Staff recommends minor electric company doing business at PEC Contracting and Engineering in the amount of $61,600 and approve a separate project contingency fund in the amount of $84,240 for the total project not to exceed $645,840. Renovations will convert a portion of the existing Washoe County Community Center into a justice court center to allow for occupancy of the Incline Justice Court. Item nine is a recommendation to accept agreement control from the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service under the Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act for the Lower Wood Creek Phase Two Water Quality Improvement Project in the amount of $450,000. Required match of $450,000. Upon approval through December 31st, 2024, authorize Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro to execute grant award document and any related amendments and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item 10 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Lower Wood Creek Water Quality Improvement Project Phase Two Project, PWP-WA-2023-179, in the vicinity of Jobs Peak Road, Southwood Boulevard, Mays Boulevard, Freels Peak Drive, and Lake Shore Boulevard in Incline Village, Nevada. Staff recommends McQueen, McEwen Construction in the amount of $3,58,679.96. This project is funded by grants from the Nevada Division of State Lands and United States Department of Agriculture. The balance of the funds are committed through the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Mitigation Fund, paid through new development fees collected for Washoe County Nevada Division of Environmental Protection and Washoe County In Kind Funding through matching staff time. Item 11 is a recommendation to approve fiscal year 23, 24 payment of $307,723, which constitutes Washoe County's share in annual funding of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency pursuant to NRS 278.0264, Section 7, and an adopted interlocal agreement. The total amount will be paid to TMRPA in quarterly installments with the first occurring in July 2023. Item 12 is a recommendation to retroactively authorize payment in the amount of $387,223.74 for emergency field construction work to Sierra Nevada Construction Inc. For the required construction of flood protection barriers and structures in and around Swan Lake, work is performed in response to the rapid rise of Swan Lake water elevation levels due to substantial precipitation that occurred during the winter of 2022, 2023. Emergency work was performed pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute 332.112 and 338.11, which requires reporting to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners. Item 11, I'm sorry, 13, is a recommendation to accept a Victims of Crime Act grant to the DA's office in the amount of $383,400. No match required from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Children and Family Services, to provide funding to retain a full-time victim witness advocate and one temporary victim witness advocate. A full-time forensic interviewer, a full-time human services support specialist, too, provide for direct victim services retroactive from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, and direct the comptroller to make the necessary budget amendments and retroactively authorize the DA's office or his designate, the district attorney or his designees to sign the grant agreement. Item 17 is a request by the Director of Washoe County Regional Animal Services through the Washoe County Clerk and pursuant to the Washoe County Code 2.030 to initiate amendments to Washoe County Code Chapter S5, Animals and Fowl, primarily to update provisions relating to variance permits to keep more than three dogs or seven cats over four months of age in the animal congested area of the county. The amendments are being requested to change the legal limit of dogs allowed from three to five dogs and proper, per property. Amend provisions related to the variance permit requirements for the application, the premises inspection, the containment of dogs and/or cats, the process for approval or denial of a variance permit application, the exclusions from the permit requirements, the renewal fees, the permit revocation, and a section governing variance permit renewals, and correct a section related to the dangerous and vicious dog registration by changing the word dangerous to vicious in one sentence, and direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney for separate, for preparation of a proposed ordinance in accordance with Washoe County Code 2.040. And finally, number 18, recommendation to approve additional funding in the amount not to exceed $110,000 for a total of $485,000 for FY23 for Unified Communications as a Service Platform provided by Vantage Businesses, Business Inc., based on the addition of platform features requested by departments and increased federal fees. Excuse me, Unified Communications as a Service is a telephone platform used by the county, and the county is the second, in the second year of a five-year agreement with Vantage, which started September 28th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, any public comment on those items?
There's nobody signed in in chambers, but I do have an email to place on the record.
Great, thank you so much. With a, oh, I have DA Edwards signed in.
Real quick, Madam Chair. I've never been asked this on this item on the block. I know it's been historical practice, but there's no need to read all those agenda items into the record for this, for this item. So going forward, if it-
Oh my gosh, you're going to save us so much time.
Exactly.
And help our manager.
Yeah.
Who is, does an amazing job, certainly, but-
I mean, it's melodious, but-
It is, it's beautiful.
But not, but we don't, you don't have to do it if you don't want, just what you know.
Okay, wow. Well, I'm thrilled on that because I always want to skip over the reading. It seems like when, the way that I conduct the meeting. I have Vice Chair Herman signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a comment on one of these items. A constituent had called me about this item and said, and that's the one regarding the phones?
Vantage?
Yeah, Vantage Contract. But her comment was, the phone system in the county is like a slot machine. You never know what you're going to get. And that is, I've noticed that since I have called, called over the years, that if you try and call back the number that the call came in on, you're not going to get anything. I mean, nobody would know who called you or anything like that. So it's very confusing. And it is to the public, too.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make that comment. So that somebody had brought to my attention.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Maybe at the end of the meeting, you can ask for us to bring back an item to discuss that. Great. So with-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There was a latecomer to public comment on item 17. We have Deborah Sock.
Okay, Ms. Sock.
Deborah Sock, for the record. On number 17, I would urge a vote of no on increasing the number of dogs to five and cats to whatever number it was. I didn't, I didn't get that far in writing out my comments. The reason for this is that three dogs make a lot of mess. Five dogs would make even more in a community, even though the, the owners might try to be diligent in cleaning it up. In addition to that, I can give you a personal example where my next-door neighbor has three dogs. If he was allowed to have five, he would. The person on the other side has PTSD, and the barking of dogs sets him off encourages PTSD to become worse. And it's been a problem in our neighborhood because of that. Five dogs would just make it worse. So I would appreciate your consideration of that and vote to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And certainly do not want to respond to public comment as a practice, but my understanding is we are going to, if we do that change, we're going to be in compliance with state law? Yes, okay, I'm getting a nod from our staff. So it's already in practice. But, okay, with the block vote, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And with that, we have a 5-0. Thank you, everyone. We will now go to item seven, Mr. Manager.
Item seven is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 823-64 for the Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program to temporarily pause monthly payments beginning June 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, to allow for additional public outreach and allow for a community-driven determination of the future of the Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program. Reductions in program rate revenues are estimated at $13,551 in fiscal year '23 and $81,304 in fiscal year '24. The Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program is a program established through ordinance to assist with groundwater recharge within the Golden Valley Subbasin in support of domestic well users located within the portion of the unincorporated Washoe County.
Thank you. And I think we have Mr. Smith here.
Good morning. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. I just wanted to kind of open up this item briefly and for your consideration, this is an item for you to consider pausing the monthly payments under Ordinance 1548 through December 31st of this year. And this will also, if you go through the resolution, allow us to identify those properties that may be a bit late on their payments, that we will not send them to the Treasurer's Office to attach to the, to the tax roll. So it's to ask for a pause in the monthly payments and to not send any residents that may be delinquent on their tax rolls to the Treasurer's Office. On April 11th, we provided you with an update to the board, and at that time affirmed the process that we've been going through for about the last year to determine why the water levels in the Golden Valley area are climbing, to go through the technical process, the engineering analysis, to come back with those answers. And then, most importantly, to go through a community-driven approach to make a recommendation for the outcome of that program to you, the board, for that consideration. At that meeting on April 11th, it was stated that the community may not have enough information. These are complicated items, and there's over 600 participants in the program. We'd been seeing, over the last year at our public meetings, somewhere around 80 people come. So we sent down a ballot, a request, and we received over 50% response, a very high response rate. But this also led us to ask some more questions. We recognize that the community needs some more input. They need some more information regarding the technical work, and therefore can make the best recommendation ultimately to you, the board. So we're asking for your consideration to pause these monthly fees, creating space and taking that pressure off of the community to allow us to, through this summer, into the late summer, to go through a public meeting process and a workshop. So we've, we're scheduling this workshop for June so we can bring this additional information to the community. And most importantly, to get that commitment back from the community- get that commitment back from the community about what direction they want you to take on that. So to help with that technical piece, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Elaine Hansford here today to report on the, on that technical work. We, we don't often have an opportunity to have a person within the community with this kinda level of technical proficiency and communication skills to help bring this information in a way that's very digestible. We spent a lot of time on the technical pieces, but Dr. Hanford has proved herself as a, as a juggernaut in the information sharing to the community. And so I'd like to introduce her for a brief presentation. Dr. Hanford is a retired professional geologist, registered since nineteen seventy-nine and formally retired in twenty-twelve. She completed a master's degree and a doctoral program, program in geology and later earned an interdisciplinary, interdisciplinary PhD in environmental hazards and epidemiology. She has more than forty-five years' experience as a geologist and an environmental scientist consulting for the public and the private sectors, as well as university teaching and research. Her work has been honored in more than four decades of professional conferences and published peer-reviewed national and international journals. Her most recent publications include three papers last year in the American Water Resources Impact Journal. I'd like to turn the floor over to Dr. Hansford.
Welcome, Dr. Hanford. Wow, it's so exciting to have such an esteemed guest here today.
I'll do my best. Thank you for having me. Uh, let me start by saying that this has been evolving over a number of months, uh, since I got the opportunity to begin doing a technical review of the hydrologic investigation and modeling that was being done under contract to the county by TerraFace. Uh, their work has really honed in and helped us to identify conditions and a number of questions. Uh, and then I took their work and then went back and reviewed all pre-existing studies that had been done in Golden Valley that date back to the early nineteen seventies. So what I'm gonna present today is an overview of what we understand now about the valley, and I must say that every penny that was spent on the TerraFace work was worth its weight in gold, because without that, we would not be where we are today, which I believe is a very thorough understanding of the geology and the hydrology of Golden Valley. Golden Valley is a sub-basin within Lemon Valley. Uh, there's the Silver Lake to the west and Lemon Valley to the east, and then Golden Valley is the southern portion on the Lemon, Lemon Valley side. Um, I do know very specifically that these boundaries are set based on surface water conditions, surface water drainage. In other words, if a drop of water falls within the line, it stays in that basin. If it falls outside the line, it drains into another area. That's not true when we get to groundwater. I'll explain. The groundwater conditions in Golden Valley are controlled by the geology. What we have is, uh, three basic intervals of geologic materials. We have the green, which is Mesozoic granitic rocks. Those date from the time of the dinosaurs. We have volcanic rocks. Those are tertiary in age, so instead of being in the hundreds of millions of years old, those are more in the tens of millions of years' age. Excuse me. And then we have the youngest materials, which are the valley fill sediments. Those are just a few million years old. The TerraFace study looked at all of the drillers' logs that exist, uh, on record with the state of Nevada. There are over five hundred and fifty of them. Uh, they reviewed those logs. We had to interpret what was in the drillers' logs because drillers talk about things like sponge rock and shale, S-H-A-I-L, neither of which are true technical terms. Uh, they oftentimes misinterpret the geologic materials. So we had to go back and review those, give them proper geologic interpretation, and then they develop cross-sections along each of the lines that you see here, crossing the valley. And one of the most important aspects of that was to identify what we call the bedrock fault. And that runs north-south and then trends to the northwest, and it crosses Estates Drive, separating what we colloquially call the gun streets from most of the valley itself to the east. Here's a generalized cross-section. You can see here that the bedrock has different elevations. It crosses the bedrock fault, it rises, and then drops into a smaller sub-basin where the gun streets are. The materials interbed, interfinger, and it's the character of those materials that control the rate at which groundwater moves through the subsurface. Clays tend to inhibit groundwater movement and, let me go back two slides. The bedrock here in this area, the volcanics are important because the composition, the mineral composition of those rocks also tends to preclude the movement of water through the subsurface. So if you know anything about where different kinds of septic systems are put in the valley, then we know that most of the engineered septic systems are right here within those volcanic materials because they do not perk. That is, they do not allow water to move into the subsurface. One of the important findings in the TerraFace work was to recognize where the groundwater recharge in the valley comes from. About two-thirds of it comes from precipitation, either in the warmer rain or snow, which then infiltrates into the subsurface. About a, a quarter of the total volume comes from what we call pevine inflow, and that's water that moves down through the rocks of pevine and then flows through the bedrock and through the sediments into Golden Valley. So it crosses those boundary lines, okay? The lesser volume, about ten percent in total, depending upon any given year, uh, comes from the Golden Valley Recharge Program that operated from nineteen ninety-one through the end of two thousand and one, uh, from developments that were approved for that part of the, of Washoe County, and those are supplied by water from Tamwa. Most of that water, however, because they also provide sewer systems, that water really means a very minimal amount of irrigation water. And because we're looking at medium-density subdivision development, those lots are limited in size and they have limited areas to irrigate. For residents of Golden Valley who are on wells and septic systems, it's essentially a recycling, if you will. We pull water out of the ground, use it in our homes, and some of it gets flushed. What goes into the septic system then slowly goes back into the subsurface, so it's a recycling, if you will. Then we have the question of surface water drainage. Uh, and that's a redistribution of water. It doesn't always stay where it falls on the surface of the earth. It runs off, and in some cases, runs off and accumulates. And if you've been out there recently, uh, a couple months ago, you might have seen the flooding that was associated with Golden Mesa South. Uh, it took out one of their culverts. We had flooding along the Marlin Ditch. Number of my neighbors have had to do a lot of remedial work to clean up after those floods. If we look at the long-term precipitation pattern, and this is from the city of Reno, uh, Reno International Airport, and this is a record going back to nineteen thirty-seven, and you can see that really there isn't a lot of difference in the pattern. This is the average over that whole period of time, uh, with a couple of exceptions. From mid-nineteen eighty to mid-nineteen ninety, we had an extended period of time in which most of the years had either average or below-average amounts of precipitation. That pattern again occurred in nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and three, where in that case we had all years with below-average precipitation. Now, we don't have precipitation gauging officially in Golden Valley, but we can use this pattern as a reflection of what's happened in Golden Valley. And what we find in Golden Valley is because of the elevation, we get higher amounts of precipitation. We use what are called iso-hiots. These are lines that we draw on the map that show areas of essentially equal precipitation. Notice that here in the valley, we're typically around ten to twelve inches of precipitation, and then up in the granitic bedrock, we're up in the twelve to fourteen or even higher amounts of precipitation in a given year. On the south and west, where those medium-density subdivisions are, they preclude infiltration of water because you've got rooftops and lots of pavement, and so water becomes runoff. In the volcanic bedrock, it also not only precludes infiltration from septic systems, but it includes, precludes infiltration of precipitation. So we get less recharge in these areas. Looking at the valley itself, if we look to the northeast, we see, for reference, here's the, the burrow pit that's out there, uh, the granitic areas. This is our recharge zone. This is a critical recharge zone, especially for those folks who live in the higher elevations at the back of the valley. Looking to the east and southeast, we see the lower areas. These are the volcanic rocks that do not allow much infiltration, and then you can see some of the development that was going on in the western edge of the valley. Two things to note here, just the fact that this area is being cleared for development automatically reduces infiltration of groundwater, meaning less recharge. And then once the development is done, we have rooftops and pavement, which again reduces infiltration. Over the years, since nineteen seventy, we've had a total of five hundred and fifty wells that have been drilled in the valley. Most of those were drilled, uh, during the nineteen seventies, and if you look at the record, actually you find that most of those, three hundred and sixty-two wells were drilled in the latter part of the seventies. So essentially from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty. The following year, another hundred wells were drilled, and then very much declining in number after that. Putting everything together in a timeline helps us begin to understand the interaction of all of these factors. Whoops, I missed something. What am I missing? Up, out of sequence. I was, I'm getting ahead of myself here. All right. Um, we had two municipal wells that were in Lem, uh, providing water to Lemon Valley, uh, in the nineteen seventies. Those were pumping an average of about forty-two acre-feet per year. As growth in Lemon Valley increased, that pumping rate increased to a hundred and three acre-feet per year, and in the latter part of the nine, mid-to-nineteen nineties to the early two-thousands, again in response to growth, that pumping increased to about a hundred and twenty-six acre-feet per year. Domestic wells, most of those, as we saw earlier, were drilled in the nineteen seventies, declining number, and now we're essentially at a constant rate. The developments began around two thousand and continued up to the early two thousand tw- twenties, and then they will have minimal impact on changes in the recharge of the Golden Valley area. North Valley High School provides a minimal amount of recharge, and that's only when they're watering the athletic fields. Golden Mesa South is currently under development. That will also be water supplied by Tamwa. Uh, there's some question now about Golden Mesa North, when it might actually begin construction. Reminder of the precipitation pattern and the dry conditions that we had in the nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-five, and again in the early two thousands. The recharge program had two intervals. Uh, when it was a pilot program under the Bureau of Reclamation, they were inputting an average of thirty-three and a half acre-feet per year. And then when it was taken over and under the direction of the county, it was increased to an average of about fifty-seven acre-feet per year. What happened to the groundwater? Well, what we see here is during the early phase, some groundwater levels in wells stayed fairly constant in the southeastern portion of the valley and then sharply increased. When the water was shut off for about four years and then taken over by the county, then we saw increases in those groundwater levels in the southeast. In the gun streets, what we saw was, uh, an increase, fairly constant rate of increase for all the wells. And then in the northern part of Golden Valley, some wells remained fairly constant, some increased, others began to decrease. Historically, what's happened, in nineteen seventy-one, which was the first, uh, investigation of groundwater conditions out there, what they found was that we had two municipal wells, the one up here pulling water that was literally leaving the valley, and this one pulling water off of what they thought was pevine flow, and therefore had minimal impact on the valley. The contours that you see here, five forty, five sixty, and five eighty, those are elevations of the groundwater level, and I've increased the emphasis of those same contours in each of these diagrams for your reference. By nineteen ninety-one, what we see on the top right here, we still have pumping of the municipal wells, and those are decreasing the level of groundwater under those wells, what we call drawdown, or creating what we call a cone of depression. In other words, the groundwater surface has been pulled down. It means they're taking out more water than naturally recharges. So they're mining the groundwater. Couple other things to notice in nineteen ninety-one. Because of the amount of water that was being pulled out in these two wells, notice what's happened. These groundwater contours have shifted. They're no longer here, they're way over in the eastern part of the valley. As a result, groundwater levels dropped and a number of wells had to be redrilled. And those are the yellow dots that you see here, along the northern and the eastern portion of the valley. In two thousand and two, those commercial wells, municipal wells, were shut down because the pipeline had been finished and water was being pulled down from Honey Lake, and that water is being used by Tamwa to service the folks in Lemon Valley. Three years later, only three years later, what do we see in Golden Valley? We see that the groundwater contours are shifting to the west, and we're beginning to see a rise in the groundwater levels here in the gun streets. Ten years later, in two thousand and fifteen, it's even more pronounced. So those groundwater contours have shifted to the west, and we see a greater concentration of higher levels of groundwater here in the gun streets. Two thousand and twenty-one, you can see there's been a continuation of those contours to move to the west, meaning groundwater has come up across the whole valley. The important thing to note here is that what we have currently is a return of pevine inflow because the commercial well that was here is no longer intercepting, and the commercial well that was up here is no longer basically sucking water out of the valley. So we're returning to a more natural condition in the valley. Our recharge comes from the volcanic, a little bit of the volcanic area, but mostly from the granitic rocks to the north and the east. And then we have surf- And then we have surface flow that comes down and moves out through Golden Valley Wash and eventually ends up in Lemon Valley. We have two distinct kinds of conditions going on in the basin, and they're pretty much divided by the bedrock fault. So east of the bedrock fault, we have conditions where the groundwater is predominantly in the bedrock, and the bedrock is highly fractured in some areas and not fractured in others. So it's a very iffy kind of condition. When you punch a well down, you hope you hit the fractures that have water in them. In some cases, you do, in other cases, you don't. When wells had to be deepened, they had to drill them down deep enough to hopefully encounter fractures that had groundwater moving through them. So we had essentially dry conditions in the sediments for most of the eastern portion of the valley, and then in the western portion of the valley, hopefully wells are deep enough to intersect fracture zones that yield groundwater. The response of what we call static water level, and that's what happens in the bedrock, is there's enough pressure moving water through those fractures that, when you punch down, poke a hole in it essentially with a well, then the water pressure pushes that water level up. And that's what we call a static water level. Okay? The rapid response is that we saw earlier, when the wells were shut off in 2002, by 2005, just three years later, we saw the bedrock fracture zone, static water levels beginning to respond. And I call that rapid because usually, when groundwater moves through bedrock, it moves at the rate of a few feet per 10 years. Here, we had a very rapid response, where we see groundwater levels coming up by 10 or 15 feet in less than three years. In the gun streets, the west side of the bedrock fault, we have more of a, what we typically think of as a groundwater condition, where the sediments are saturated, you put your well down and pump the water out. There is interaction with the underlying fractures in the bedrock, so we know those are well-connected, at least on that side of the bedrock fault. And again, we see very rapid response here when the municipal wells quit pumping water out and quit intercepting water from peyvine inflow. So putting it all together again, expanding our timeline a little bit, here's when the pumping stopped. Here's when most of our residents started pulling water out, recycling it in the valley. Here's the dry conditions. And so what we see when the recharge program started was that groundwater levels continued to decline. And then, when precipitation increased, we saw a rapid response. Continuing increased pumping of the municipal wells meant that groundwater again declined, complicated by the fact that our conditions were drier during the next several years. So we saw water levels decline. And then, with the additional water from the recharge program and the addition of peyvine inflow and normal infiltration in the bedrock areas, we saw water table begin to come up and rise across most of the valley. So the function of the recharge program has been multifaceted. It helped to offset below-average precipitation that occurred in the mid-1980s to mid-1990s, and again in the early 2000s. It helped to offset some of the loss of peyvine inflow because of those two municipal wells being pumped at ever-increasing rates until 2002. Because there was some recharge going into the valley to help offset those losses, fewer wells had to be deepened. And then it facilitated the beginning of recharge after those wells were shut down from 2002 to 2016, when the program was temporarily turned off. So where do we go from here? This is from Tara Fase's report, and their projected worst-case scenarios. What's going to happen in the future? None of us has a crystal ball, but we can hope for the west the best, plan for the worst. That's always the best advice. So the purpose of the Golden Valley Recharge Program helps in cases, and we've already seen, of extended drought periods, as it did 1985 to 1995, and again in the early 2000s. It helped to offset the loss of inflow from peyvine due to the municipal wells being pumped. And it may help offset other potential losses or changes in the groundwater regime. Those of us who've lived even temporarily in California know that all it takes is one good earthquake, and you can change the entire groundwater flow. We can also have other potential implications. And tomorrow, I will be attending the atrium presentation of the Lands Management Act because that's one of those other factors. It's a political factor, but we can't ignore it. Okay, that I would be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Haniford. I learned so much, wow. And I really appreciate your commitment to really looking into this issue and supporting the Washington County staff.
That's wonderful.
I'm looking to my fellow commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Smith or Dr. Haniford? Commissioner Clark?
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. You know, water is life, and, you know, we need to really protect that resource. I know there's a lot of aquifers, there's a lot of other cities in the west, especially in our state. I think of Pahrump in that area, they wish they had water levels that were rising. That isn't the case for them. So it's just, it's good to hear that in this case, nature's doing what nature does and sending the extra water into that area. Thank you.
Well, it's not a question of sending water in, it's a question of humans no longer taking excess water out.
I was referring to when you said, I was referring, referring to what you said about peyvine and that flow moving in now is what I was referring to. Thank you.
Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to tell you thank you very much for spending the time to get this all together for us and explain it, and you did such a beautiful job. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Appreciate the opportunity. I know it went over pretty fast, there's a lot of technical information, but hopefully I've been able to kind of condense it down to give you a good overview.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you so much. Quick question on the timeline, but I hear there's a golf course that needs some water that's not too far from you. So there's a June workshop, we're potentially pushing pause. Can you talk to me about what it looks like moving forward after December of 2023?
Yeah, again, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering. Yes, June is the busy month with community meetings and a workshop. Then we expect that the community will then have a little bit of time to digest, digest these, these new pieces of information. We will repoll the community and then come back in August with a community meeting to summarize those, that input that we're receiving. With that, we expect to come back straight away to you with the community's recommendation for the future of the Golden Valley Recharge Program. Of course, that recommendation will require some form of ordinance change, and that will take a couple of months to go through that part of the process. Again, why we're asking for the resolution today to temporarily pause the fees, giving us the space and the time to do that work.
Commissioner Clark?
If I can add just briefly, I will be participating in the workshop and the community meetings to help convey to the other residents an understanding of the technical situation that we have and why the recharge program has been of value to the residents and what natural conditions are out there so they can understand. When we had a community meeting about a month ago, what I thought was going to be a 20-minute presentation turned into 45 minutes because of all the questions that the residents had.
That's great, and we really appreciate your ongoing commitment to this project. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment, when and if we send out another survey, please make sure it says survey, ballot. When people saw ballot on it the last time, that was a little bit off-putting for many folks. So if we could put survey, information, informational request, survey, something other than ballot on the top of that request. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And I see we have public comment, but I will just say thank you so much to the staff because I know there was a lot of outreach that happened when you brought the presentation to us, and then this board gave you additional direction to go out and seek more public input, which you did very quickly, I might add. And, you know, having Ms. Haniford as our resource is incredible. So I know you put in a lot of work, you and your team, and so I just want to say thank you because I think it shows Washoe County's commitment to doing this right. And I know it's been a long time coming, and I know there's folks who are going to speak in public comment talking about how long it's taken, but I know that Washoe County, what I've learned in my almost two and a half years here at Washoe County is that we take things slow to do them right. And so I just really appreciate that. Madam Clark, could you please call public comment?
Thank you.
Stuart Mackey?
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Stuart Mackay. Okay, I ran for Attorney General this year, or last year, rather. And I just wanted to point out that she does a beautiful job, and what they did to Golden Valley can't be touched. I was here for every moment of it in the last 50 years. So what is bothering me is the county possibly getting COVID funds involved with some of their stuff. Because I've, I've been doing Reno, and they are taking their public funds, like for their police departments and whoever, and they're going to pay them with their public funds, with their COVID funds, and pulling the public funds. And I'm under the impression that since you did get a bill for that funding, that's supposed to be what it's used for. So I don't know what they're going to do with the money that they pull. And I'm really thinking that an audit's going to happen for everybody in government here in the state. Okay? So be aware of that, because after being told that, and I'm really having a problem with the W-9 that Reno is putting out every year, which means they're lower than the agency they're sending it to, I'm wondering whether they have the ability to enforce And that's sort of where I want to leave you because I really think things need to be really looked into, especially in the county, especially our north county, because we can save that. I don't know about this, I grew up in Vegas, okay? I've been here almost most of my life, and I really think there's a problem starting. So be careful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Roger Edwards, for the record. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. Well, folks, you know, this is a big day for me. Been up here for years asking for this. Couple things we need to talk about, though. There are some glaring omissions in Dr. Haniford's presentation, and for the people that live in the gun streets, it's, she didn't mention the water tables at between 5 and 10 feet now. And, you know, those homes are all on septic systems, they're between 15 and 20 feet down. And those septic systems could be lost from the water table being that high. So we need to look at emergency steps to mitigate that if we can. And I don't know how that would happen, but anyway, I've got some ideas. But anyway, another thing that she omitted was the Tara Fase study that they alluded to and used as one of the main, you know, resource for all these numbers, cost our water recharge program $150,000. Who approved that? I didn't approve it, I'll guarantee you that. I was there at the beginning. And, you know, I'm certainly glad we're shutting down the charges, but, you know, and they did finally touch on the fact of suspending threatening letters and so forth. But, you know, over the seven years that the system's been shut down, the management fees as by Director Smith's own numbers are between 2,500 and something like 2,900 a month for collecting the bills, sending out the notices, all that sort of thing. You realize that even at the lower number, over the seven-year period the program's been shut down, it's $210,000 of unnecessary charges that our program's been charged, 210 grand. You add another 150 grand on for the Tara Fase study, and we're talking about 350 grand that our program's out that we shouldn't have been. You know, I get, I was tickled by the fact that, well, yeah, the county's a little slow, but we try to do the job right. I've been at this for seven years to get this program shut down. Come on. All right? This needs a lot more work.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clark. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Mr. Edwards just said about the amounts of money that the county's collected during the non-recharging period, I'd like to see that we not only don't send their house to the treasurer, send their bill to the treasurer for possible foreclosure on their property, but we also remove any late fees and penalties. I think that that's appropriate as well, is to remove any penalties and late charges that might be applicable to these properties. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm not seeing any other commissioners who are wanting to speak on this item. Today, we're looking to pause these monthly payments, that's the recommendation by staff, and so I am looking for a motion from this board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt resolution R23-64 for the Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program to temporarily pause monthly payments beginning June 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, to allow for additional public outreach and allow for a community-driven determination of the future of the Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program.
Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. Oh, yes, thank you, Vice Chair Herman. With that motion, and second, any question on the motion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, I think that passes unanimously. Thank you all for your time on that item. And now, I know that Ms. Matiavich is in the audience for item 14, but we also have quite a few community members here for item 15, so I'm going to make you wait, I'm so sorry, but we're going to go to item 15, Mr. Manager, and then we'll go back to item 14, if you will.
Item, item 15 is a discussion and possible action under 7.2 reconsideration of the Board of County Commissioners' rules or procedures as requested by Chair, Chair Hill at May 16th, 2023, board meeting on whether to reconsider the board vote on May 9th, 2023, for the appeal of the Washoe County Director of Planning and Buildings' partial approval of short-term rental administrative review. rental administrative review case number WSTRAR22.0012 Gupta Assessor parcel number 128-S60.33. If reconsideration is approved, the item will be brought back for a hearing to determine whether or not, whether to uphold, reverse, or modify the original direction of May 9, 2023. Virtual public comment is eligible.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And before we have a staff, a quick preview on this item, DA Edwards, will you just go over today what the board is able to do and how this rule plays and how they should be thinking about their vote today?
Yes. What you're not doing today is actually rehearing the item. What you're doing today is hearing information about whether you do or do not want to rehear the item. So the motion at the end of this will either be motion to redo the hearing or a motion not to, and which would just leave it in place as is. So it's kind of a two-step process. If there's a desire to actually redo the hearing, then it would come back for the hearing part. If not, it would just end today.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And do you have anything for us, Mr. Slaronow?
For the record, Dave Slaronow, actually, I was going to try to lay out the same brick road that Mr. Edwards did.
Okay. Well, we will call you up if we have questions. And I did ask for this item to come to the board. And I have never asked for reconsideration in my two and a half years here at, almost two and a half years here at the county commission. And the reason I did is because the more I thought about what the information that this board considered at our meeting and how that information from the HOA and the CCNRs is not even referenced for the rest of the Tier 1 permits that our staff, and Tier 2 permits, which I think there are a few already permitted within Tyrolean Village review. So our staff only ask for what the HOA letter of parking, the permitted parking per each parcel. And our staff are not looking at whether it's one spot or at least one spot as per the CCNRs. And I think I got caught up, I will admit, in that discussion of whether we look at the HOA's rules and those covenants. And our job as a board is to look at our code. And I got lost in that discussion, sadly. So whether or not this Tyrolean Village decides to prohibit Tier 2, which they may, my understanding is that's coming before their HOA board in early June. It still is not fair that this board restricted Mr. Gupta to only two parking spots when the HOA allocated three parking spots to his property, especially because he does snow removal on his driveway. And so even if a Tier 2 would not be permitted, we have reduced his parking allowance further than any other property in Tyrolean Village. And I just don't think that that is fair. And if we want to change the code, and perhaps we do, because we consider Tyrolean Village a multifamily complex instead of, because of the way that the HOA allocates parking, and if we want to even look at whether we want to permit tiers in the future. And that may be something this board tackles. I know this will be coming to the board hopefully in July or August, certainly with bringing a cap on STRs. But it is not looking at the code equitably for Mr. Gupta. And that is the argument I'm bringing today to the board and why I would like to, I hope the board will support my motion for reconsideration. And so I'm happy to hear any board comments, but we also have public commenters on that issue. I see Commissioner Andreola here.
I have a quick question, just in terms of clarification. If it were to come back to be reconsidered and the board actually has the purview to look at not only the existing code as it stands and the parking spaces, but also the number that may be under Tier 1 as well, would that be all considered if it does come back? The number of people who can actually stay, because that was one of the parts of the motion that passed, was not only the parking allocation number, but also the number of guests that would be able to stay. So I'm just curious if, because you're just talking about parking, but it just being everything that could be looked at?
It's my understanding that yes. And I will look to DA Edwards, but my understanding that yes, because parking really, parking and livable square footage essentially is what we look at as the number of people who can be in a short-term rental, that that would also be part of the discussion. But DA Edwards or staff, I'm not sure, can answer that?
I'll answer as best I can. With short-term rentals, there's a special provision in the Development Code that says, on an appeal from the lower body, the only thing that the county commission can consider is the issue that was raised in the appeal. My understanding of the appeal itself in this case was that it was directed at parking. And so you will be revisiting that issue if you do decide to redo the hearing and determining whether or not you do or do not think the correct decision was made.
But parking, Mr. DA Edwards, sorry to put you on the spot here, and perhaps a staff question, clarification, that does actually determine, as well as livable square footage, how many people can be in the short-term rental?
You're correct. There's a direct correlation to number of occupants versus number of parking spaces. So that is correct. But it will be, the focus will just be on the parking side.
Thank you so much. Do you, is that clear, Ms. Mudd?
I was clear until you just added the clarification. So if it were to come back, because there's a correlation between the number of parking spots, the occupants could also be changed if, in fact, it were to come back?
Yes.
Just making sure I'm understanding.
Mr. DA Edwards, you could clarify.
Yeah. You can decide whether or not there was the required number of parking spaces available to allow the level of permit that they are seeking, which dictates how many occupants can be in the structure for use as a short-term rental. If you decide that there are only two spaces available instead of three, or that there's only one space available instead of two or three, that will directly relate to the tier level that they're allowed to be approved for. And I don't know, is that what you're asking? I mean, I think it's a, it's a if-this-then-that type of correlation. But parking does drive the ability to decide which tier you can approve them in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I appreciate that you want to hear this again, and that's fine. I think if we do hear this again, we need to have the assessor come in because I've talked with the assessor a few times after this and after it's come back up. And this is a very unique property in that parking on the common area. And I wasn't here when we voted on short-term rentals. I wasn't even in office then. But, you know, it's something that's a factor that really has to be looked at, is if we're granting these licenses based on parking, and parking is based on common area, was that considered in the past? And it probably wasn't because this is a unique property. And, you know, we live in a gaming state, and Mr. Gupta, if I'm pronouncing the name properly, he stands a chance, he's gambling now. He's got, he's got the ability to park a couple of cars there. If it goes the other way, where it's restricted, he's going to be even in a tougher spot. So it's almost like, you know, everybody's got to weigh this. Anytime you go to court, you know, there's no slam dunks. If we go into this and go deeper and find out that there's only one spot allotted, I'm going to have to just say that might go the other way. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other commissioners signed in. So Madam Clerk, public comment.
We have Mary Lou Kennedy over Zoom.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for listening to comments today. We're kind of jumping in here a little bit in the middle because the connection was down in the library. But I just want to encourage you to vote no regarding the reconsideration of the board's previous decision on the appeal on May 9, 2023. I feel that you made a good decision in restricting the STR permit to eight people based on what was presented regarding parking issues, based on Washoe County Ordinance 110-319 regarding short-term parking. As you already know, overflow parking cannot be used for an STR, nor can access easement be used for parking. In this case, technically, the driveway is an easement into the garage, which is the allotted parking for the unit. So please consider that. And the fact, as you know, that one parking space is required for every four occupants. I feel that a sound case was presented regarding the parking on this issue, and I would just appeal to you to stand by your previous decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Smith, here in chambers.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, I am here on behalf of the concerned neighbors of Tyrolean Village. And we're asking you to vote against reconsideration of the May 9 vote on the STR permit at 1447 Tyrell Drive. It's been said that the appellant had some inaccuracies in their statements about the CCNRs. We do not believe this to be the case, and provided a copy of both the CCNRs, our rules and regulations, and the Washoe County Code for examination when we submitted our appeal. We're reattaching copies of these documents again as part of our public comment. Mr. Gupta claimed on May 9 that our CCNRs said one or more parking spots are allotted for each unit. We pointed out this is not the language in our CCNRs as amended by the rules and regs. The specific language states, since 1968, quote, "Declarent shall allocate at least one such space to each unit owner," end quote. This constitutes both the minimum and the maximum spaces available, as clarified by our HOA Rules and Regulations, Section A3, which reads, quote, "Owners are entitled to one parking space per residence under the CCNRs." This was reaffirmed in a letter to the county received from our HOA attorney. We also pointed out our rules make it clear that the garage counts as the one assigned parking space. Thus, this property is entitled to four occupants in the STR, which is more in line with the character of our community. Additionally, the Washoe County Code clearly states, as Mary Lou Kennedy pointed out, that STR owners are not permitted to use overflow parking, which is any spot outside of their allotted one space. Take a look at 1110-319.15. It's inappropriate to allow one property owner, Mr. Gupta, to personally benefit from a common land asset, such as a second parking spot, which is owned and paid for by all HOA owners. Since other STR owners are also limited to one spot, he should not be treated differently. On May 9, this commission voted for an occupancy of eight. Our community is willing to accept this decision. This commission has many pressing matters before it. We believe that it's not productive use of the commission's time to revisit this matter, and respectfully request that the commission vote against reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Daniel Zam.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Dan Zam, and I reside at 1483 Tyrell Drive in Incline Village, in Tyrolean Village. And we've been residents there for eight years. We purchased our home in Tyrolean Village because it was a peaceful and quiet neighborhood, zoned for single-family residential use, and was not zoned for commercial, short-term, transient use, like a motel or a short-term rental. Short-term rentals are commercial profit-making transient use, which is inconsistent with our single-family residential zoning. In addition to this, the high volume of short-term rental commercial activity poses resident and first responder fire safety issues. This is especially true in a neighborhood such as Tyrolean Village that has only one access and egress, narrow roads, and dead ends with no viable turnaround space for firefighting equipment. Rules addressing this short-term rental safety issue come directly from the International Fire Code adopted by the Nevada State Fire Marshal in order to protect both residents and firefighters' safety. So I would encourage, excuse me, I would encourage the county not to neglect international fire codes by continuing to promote excess transient occupancy that just aggravates this fire safety issue. Please do not reconsider your original decision to limit the number of occupants to eight in this short-term rental at 1447 Tyrell Drive. Also, I would ask that you consider not permitting any more short-term rentals in Tyrolean Village because of these hazardous safety conditions. Thank you.
Next is Beverly Hughes.
Good afternoon. I'm Beverly Hughes. I believe you have my testimony from May the 9. And I'm simply asking that the commissioners honor the rights of private tax-paying citizens and vote no for the reconstruction of the STRAR22-0013. Simple as that.
Thank you.
Next is Diane Schmeng.
Flip it around. It's upside down from where we see it. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Diane Schmeng, 1443 Tyrell Drive, Incline Village. Please note the Washoe County Strategic Plan Mission Statement: Working Together Regionally to Provide and Sustain a Safe, Secure, and Healthy Community. I am here today because my Tyrolean Village residential neighborhood is unable to share in that vision. We are the unwilling pawns in the vortex of a money machine of the STR industry, the real estate community, and STR investors. 2019 was the beginning of our frustrating fight to raise awareness of the negative impact STRs were bringing to our community. I have updated the map to show our current 32 STRs. There are currently two tentative STRs in the pipeline, and the bad behaviors have only escalated. escalated. Have you had a netwit shoot off a gun on New Year's Eve when asked not to? We have. Have you come home and found a drone circling your home? I have. We can't make this stuff up. This is our reality. We are being victimized because we created a desirable neighborhood while this money machine is stealthily repurposing our community into a profit center. At the May 9th appeal hearing, it was suggested that we hire a property management company and a good attorney to fight STRs. We don't deserve such an easy dismissal. I suggest that your appeal vote of four versus one, and runners from 12 to eight at 1447 Tyrell be upheld. We need to get home to behind closed doors for the next possible STR netwit who feels entitled to shoot off a gun to celebrate Memorial Day. They are coming to our neighborhoods. What about yours? Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Smith.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Paul Smith, and I live three doors north of 1447 Tyrell. All my neighbors, including myself, have lived peaceably for decades with the 1968 CCNR allotment of one parking space per unit. CCNR Article 9 reads, "Declaring shall allocate at least one such space to each unit owner." Some facts, especially Commissioner Hill, relative to your earlier comments. TVA, Tyrolean Village Association, has never had more than one full-size parking space per parcel. Therefore, TVA could never allocate more than one parking space per unit, period. The CCNR statement represents both a minimum and a maximum that the HOA could ever do for allocated parking spaces. Of 237 parcels, 226 have built chalet, 92 have a garage, 145 parcels do not have a garage and rely on one allocated street parking space, and 98 remaining spaces are unallocated and for use as owner overflow. Clearly, there are not enough unallocated parking spaces so that each chalet without a garage can have more than one reserved full space. Tyrolean Village is the only HOA in the entire Tahoe Basin that can convert paved road and parking spaces to garages, and the HOA owners voted in 1992 to establish this program as one neighbor giving up paved area to help another gain a garage. At that time, it was clear that any garage would represent the unit's one allocated parking space regardless of the garage size. 1447 Tyrell benefited from this program even though their parcel lies 100-plus feet distant from the street. 1447 Tyrell has a garage, a driveway, and an access bridge built over common land only because all other HOA owners gave up open parking spaces, paved coverage, and easement access. To permit 1447 Tyrell more than one allocated parking space is unequal treatment versus the 236 other owners in the HOA who abide by the founding documents. A permit of two spaces for 1447 is further insult to those 145 specific owners who have no choice but to live with one street parking allocation given by the CCNRs. The fact that the county staff supports such CCNR violations by approving driveways and multiple parking space allocations is appalling and should stop. Please vote no for the rehearing of this appeal regardless of the fact that the May 9th decision actually allocates more spaces to 1447 Tyrell than the HOA CCNRs allocate.
Thank you.
Next is Sanjay Gupta.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate you hearing this. You know, it's a big step, I know, especially for you and myself. So a couple of comments I do want to make. I think there is some disagreement here that, you know, among, let's say, even potentially me and the other owners about how many spots do I actually have, whether it's one, two, or three? And I think the best judgment regarding how many spots I have should be left to the HOA. I think they understand the CCNR the best, in my opinion. They are the ones who enforce it, and I follow it the same way everyone else follows in the community. So if I'm allowed to, let's say, park only one car in my property, I'm assuming every other owner should be allowed to park one car on their property as well. But clearly, we don't see that's the case. We see other owners are parking, you know, multiple cars. They park two cars in the garages, they park two cars on the driveways, et cetera. So I just feel that it should be applied evenly, and I think the HOA's responsibility is to apply law evenly to all the residents. So the parking letter that the HOA has provided, which has been confirmed by their attorney, which clearly states that I have three parking spots, and they are the ultimate enforcer of the CCNRs. And as far as the building and planning department is concerned, I mean, they have very clear guidelines. They just don't necessarily get into the CCNRs to assess what's allowed and what's not allowed. They rely on the HOA to tell them how many cars can I park. Now, whether a space can park one car, two cars, or three cars, even though in the CCNR it says one space, but a space can potentially park multiple cars. So we have to rely on the HOA letter, in my opinion, and their attorney's confirmation in terms of how many cars can I park on the property. Otherwise, it's a slippery slope that creates uneven allocation even within HOA. So just take an example, you know, my neighbor, who has the exact same sized driveway as I have, can apply for a Tier 1 permit, and the HOA will provide him a letter for three car approval because he has the same sized driveway and a two-car garage, and he'll be able to get an occupancy of 10. And that decision cannot be appealed because it's a Tier 1 permit. And whereas just because I applied for a Tier 2 permit, and it became an appeal, you know, we came here, and a spot got taken away, and my occupancy got reduced. So I think this just creates uneven application of law, in my opinion, which I think is a bit problematic. And all I'm saying here is that law should be fair and even for everyone and all residents, so I'll follow it, what the law is, and the building department has been very meticulous. They've been very thorough in telling me what is required, and that's exactly what we have done here in this case. We've only asked for what, you know, we can apply for. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in, but we did receive emails to be placed on the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of comments, and, you know, I wanted to point out to Bob Conrad at This is Reno, this is not Commissioner Clark who asked for this item to be placed back on the agenda, it was Chair Hill. But I've got some questions for Mr. Gupta, but I won't ask him those questions, but I'll just bring them out loud. You know, I took a ride up there, I got a comment. I took a ride up there and looked, and there was a lot of cars in a very small area. Parking's my biggest problem because when people take vacations, they just don't pay close attention. They're there for vacation. Last summer, I had a bunch of friends over to my house, and people just parked, you know, willy-nilly around there. Luckily, I have a big driveway, and I'm not, you know, running a short-term rental operation On the short-term rental, do you have other short-term rentals? I can't ask him these questions, so I'll just skip on this. But Mr. Gupta made a statement that other people living there might have two or three cars, and, you know, that might be a situation that might be true, but when other people who are full-time residents there have several cars, do they have four people showing up every time they drive their cars up? So, you know, in my opinion, I thought we did a real solid for Mr. Gupta last time by allowing him to have two cars there, eight people, and I think it's just kind of going to be a roll of the dice. If I support the chair on this to bring it back for a vote, I'm going to go with the rules that the Homeowners Association say, one car. So you could potentially lose on this. So if you want to be a gambler, this might be the time not to do that. So just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any other comments by Commissioners? Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. I appreciate the request to bring it back. I felt very uncomfortable with the way the meeting went last time. I thought we were here as a body to look at process and to make sure that errors were not made. That letter from the HOA said it all, from their legal counsel. Our staff did what they are here to do. I felt uncomfortable that we had a homeowner who suffered from our body getting into the weeds on things that really don't have anything to do with us. HOAs exist for a reason. They're regulatory bodies in those communities, and I am supportive of the motion to, or I would like to make a motion, to reconsider that we hear this item again, to whether we uphold, reverse, or modify in support of this homeowner.
Thank you, and I really appreciate your support. Commissioner Garcia, may I, I would like to second your motion, but may I make a few modifications? DA Edwards gave me a motion. So we want to put the number into the record, WSTR AR 22-0012, the Gupta STR Appeal. To redo the appeal hearing and to determine, A, or one, the number of inadequacy of parking available to the unit and corresponding number of occupants that should be allowed, and two, whether a Tier 1 or Tier 2 STR should be approved, are you okay with the modifications to your motion? Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Okay, so that is a motion and a second. Commissioner Clark for discussion?
One last, a couple of last comments. You know, in situations like this, you know, this may ultimately end up in a court, you know? This might be something that takes it to a whole different level. I feel that, you know, we're almost having to settle the dispute between homeowners, and they've got a homeowners association. That should have been one of their first points of reference to get this solved. Next, it could be a courtroom situation, but I think they're using us to be the judge and jury to separate some disputes among homeowners. So again, it's just something that, you know, here we are, micromanaging situations in the county, and it should be handled more by the association. The county, you know, offers these short-term rental licenses to conduct business like this, but at the end of the day, I think that the homeowners association is going to supersede this. I hear both Commissioner Garcia and Chair Hill talking about a letter from the attorney, but, you know, I don't know if they understood exactly what they were talking about when they sent the letter off. You know, when the CCNRs dictate how many parking spots you can have, I think they're going to supersede what some attorney wrote a letter to the county about. So, you know, as a long-term property manager, real estate broker for 47 years, this is the kind of stuff that we shouldn't be bogged down in. But, you know, I'll support the chair if she wants to bring this back for a vote, but when we bring it back for the vote, I want the assessor to be involved. I want the attorneys for the association here. I want the CCNRs brought up. Let's just, if we're going to do it, let's just do it all. Let's have a big old time and get everybody involved and have a hearing and get it all out there. And for Mr. Bob Conrad at This is Reno, he can write a sequel to this last story about us bringing it back again. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrea.
I wanted to just ask for clarification. I believe you mentioned in the beginning of this item that the HOA was going to actually meet to discuss the CCNRs?
According to the appellant who emailed me, they said that the HOA would be meeting, I think, the first week of June to decide if Tier 2 was permitted. The reason that I am bringing this back is we limited Mr. Gupta so much because he can't even do the full extent of a Tier 1, which is 10 people, because the HOA sent a letter saying that he could have three vehicles, which would permit 10 people. So even if, and I talked to staff about this, even if the Tier 2 was prohibited by the Tyrolean Village Association, we still would need to bring this back to give him, Mr. Gupta, back his third parking spot as required by the HOA. And we could still say that we deny the Tier 2 if that is where that discussion with the Tyrolean Village Association is with, but bring back that third parking spot that the HOA certified with their letter to our staff.
So the HOA meeting that is going to be looking at only Tier 2, they're not looking at anything else? Are you aware of that?
That's my understanding, but no matter what?
No, I get it.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate for this board to look at, well, I'm asking this board to look at that parking allocation because I think that, as Mr. Gupta said in his public comments, we're holding his property to a different standard just because of an appeal, and the rest of the properties around Tyrolean Village have a different standard, which is that HOA number of parking allocations. And I think to Commissioner Clark's point, this could go to court. I don't want it to. That's why I'm bringing it back, because I think that this is the right thing to do. I feel so strongly about it. I know it's not a popular decision, but I want to do right by this community by saying, I'm going to uphold the code that we approved. I'm not going to make up a different code on the dais, and sadly, that's what I found myself doing, and that's why I'm bringing it back, because I feel like that's the right thing to do. And if we want to change the code, and I think that there is some thoughts, at least certainly by me, your chair, that wants to change the code and improve upon it, we certainly can, but we can't do it from the dais.
No, I appreciate it. Well, thanks for at least clarifying that. Where I was going on the June meeting, if there was anything that was applicable to whatever the next step is in this action, I was thinking it might be helpful to wait until after they meet if it does, in fact, come back.
That's what I'm hoping, and I look to staff, because we have to notice this thing and start all over. So do you even have an idea of when, if this were to come back, when that would come back, and would it be after that first week of June?
Yeah, for the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. I just want to verify my dates really quickly here, but the earliest with the noticing requirements for this specific item, the earliest we could bring it back to this board would be June 27th.
Perfect. So that's well after that meeting.
Thank you. I wanted to get that clarification. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, a second by myself. Any question on the motion by the board? And this is to reconsider this request. And all of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, and I think that that passes four to one. Thank you very much. And now we will go back up to item 14, and then we will break for lunch, so this Commission can look at the rest of the items with a little bit of a rest and new eyes. So item 14, Mr. Manager.
Item 14, Discussion and Direction of Staff Regarding Legislation or Legislative Issues Proposed by Legislators by Washoe County, Truckee Metals Fire Protection District, or by either, by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests, or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County. Pending legislative bills can be located at the county website. Current bills the county is tracking that may be reported on or discussed are also listed under the Government Affairs section of the website. Due to time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills that staff will seek direction from the Commission on during this item will be posted on the website under, again, Government Affairs at the county websites by 6:00 PM the Friday before the meeting. Due to the rapid pace of legislative session, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners will be posted as soon as known.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I think we have Ms. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I think we have Ms. Smatievich here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kayden Smatievich, and I have the privilege of serving as Government Affairs Liaison for Washoe County. We are about two weeks away from the end of the 82nd legislative session. And so, Madam Chair, you do have a report. I just have a couple of other things that I'd like to give a verbal update on since the time that that was, report was drafted, since we are in a period where things are moving quickly, relatively speaking. So, of your priority bills, the bills that the, this board has taken a position on, I'll just quickly give an update on those. Assembly Concurrent Resolution Number Five, which has to do with the Tahoe Transportation Action Plan, was passed out of committee on Thursday, and it is currently sitting on the resolution file for the Senate. They may take action on that today or in the, in the coming days. Senate Bill 68, which has to do with housing, permanent supportive housing and rental assistance, that is an exempt bill, so it is not subject to the deadlines. It is, remains in Senate Finance, may come for a work session in the coming days. Senate Bill 92, which authorized the appointment of county council, this is a bill that this board took a position of opposition on. That bill failed to meet last Friday's deadline, and no further action will be taken on the bill. Senate Bill 263, which makes an appropriation for the Adi Project of the Children's Cabinet and the Nevada, the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, was heard in Senate Finance yesterday, and then I did testify in support of that pursuant to the board's official policy position of support. That bill is also exempt, so it does have a bit more time. Senate Bill 368, which is the bill having to do with discriminatory language in property records, passed out of committee on Friday, and I'm expecting that to be reported out of committee here shortly. Two other bills that I would mention. Assembly Bill Two, that was the City of Sparks bill that had to do with blue lights, which is something that this commission had considered as one of our own BDRs, has passed and was enrolled and delivered to the governor yesterday. So we'll continue to track that, to see whether or not that continues to move forward. But we're optimistic, and again, thank the City of Sparks for bringing that bill forward. And then I heard that there was some discussion earlier on Assembly Bill 15, which has to do with the salaries of district court judges. Would just give a quick update in the way to let you know that that bill is exempt from the deadlines. It is currently in assembly ways and means. And so with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions on any other bills that you may have, or about the process.
Thank you so much. I have no questions, but I look to, let me pull up my screen. I look to my fellow board members to see if they have anything. I'm not seeing that they do. You are doing a great job for us, thank you so much. I know it's an interesting session.
It is indeed, thank you.
And word on the street, it may be extended, who's to say?
Who's to say?
Yeah.
Lots of speculation about whether or not there will be a need for a special session. I, I don't want to speculate on that myself. We'll just see how things work out in the next two weeks.
Okay, well, we'll be watching that. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay, and it's for possible action, but we have no action to take today. So, thank you so much. We, oh, it is 1:14, so I'd like this board to come back at 2:00 after we take a short lunch break. Thank you so much.
Okay, it is two o'clock. And I will now call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order back from our recess. Mr. Manager, we are now on item fifteen, or sixteen, excuse me.
All right, item sixteen is a discussion on possible action under seven dot two reconsideration of the Board of County Commissioners' rules of procedure as requested by Commissioner Clark at the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting on whether to reconsider the board vote of May ninth, twenty twenty-three for the appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's approval of special use permit case number WSUP twenty-three dash zero 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 three for the Prana transmission line for construction of a five mile long, three hundred and forty-five kilovolt generation tie line connecting the Prana substation to the Fort Sage substation. The transmission line will run along Rainbow Highway with the intersection of Calvita Way to the existing Fort Sage substation, which is utility services use type. If reconsideration is approved, the item will be brought back for a hearing to determine whether to uphold, reverse, or modify the original decision from May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. And Mr. Solano, since the DA Edwards isn't here, can you just help us understand what item is before us today and what action we can take today?
Absolutely. For the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. For you this afternoon is a reconsideration. This is specifically whether the board would like to reconsider the vote for WSUP twenty-three dash zero 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 three, the Prana Transmission Line, from the meeting on May ninth. So this is specific to whether the board would like us to renotice and bring the item back to you in its full entire form. So that's where we're at today, and it's up to the commission to have a discussion related to their rules and procedures.
And if we brought it back, we'd have to renotice and have another public hearing, just in the same way it was outlined to us with the short-term rental item that we just heard.
That is correct. We will renotice the entire project just as it was before. This is really for you to determine whether you would like to reconsider the vote taken by this board.
Thank you very much. And I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the reason I brought this back was I heard from a lot of people who were concerned. I'm not a conspiracy theorist. I don't believe in that stuff. But, you know, I sit here to serve the residents of Washoe County, and if I hear from enough people, I'll ask. My only other interest is to allow the residents of Washoe County to learn who is doing what, where, and who owns this, and is it still the original applicant? Is there national security issues? Just some questions that I wanted, I'd like to have answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have comments? I see Vice Chair Harmon has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason I voted against it last time, and I would probably vote against it again, I've been dealing with the folks in Lassen County, and also the folks at Hurlong. And they're very concerned because the project for the original substation, or the actual solar project, it kind of went through the same kind of swaps. And I just feel like we've been maybe duped because, you know, if somebody says their one, one person goes in and gets the permits, and then it ends up in the Republic of China as ownership, or somebody from that, I feel like I'm committing treason almost to have that, which overlooks Hurlong, being owned by the Chinese with hundred-and-fifty-foot towers overseeing it. I mean, it just scares the heck out of me to think that we would be responsible for voting yes on something that could turn out to be like our other commissioner at the other end there said, you know, a military national threat, you know? So that's why I've been so concerned about it, because they're having the same feelings about it in Lassen County, too. So I'm wondering what we can do about it. And they'd asked me, you know, we really don't need to have this happen here, you know, let's get rid of it. So we ended up voting for the power line part of it, because it's in our, the whole thing is actually in our, in our state. So it's very worrisome to me, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to reemphasize with special emphasis that, you know, I'm not in the military. I don't know if this is a national security issue. I'd like to have somebody from Hurlong chime in on this and give us their opinion, and that's what I'm looking for. Is it a national, could it be, does it have the potential to be, is it a national security issue based on a United States military base close proximate to this? That's the question that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Commissioner Andriola has signed in.
So I think there's a few things that are really fact-based. And one is that, I actually mentioned this during the last meeting, that in the provisions of the actual contract, there are conditions that if, for whatever reason, there was a change in ownership, that there's a whole process, the contract essentially stops, and one can't just, you know, on a whim, have the project done by another company. So the special use permit remains in effect as long as the business is in operation. Again, it's in the documents. This isn't me just reading anything. This is me reading the approved contract and the conditions thereof that went through and were filed with the Planning Division. And I mentioned that during the last meeting. But since then, there's a couple points that are fact. The documents and emails that came from essentially the Army don't indicate any concern. In fact, they remain neutral in terms of the project, and we're actually having discussion with Prana about looking at what they could possibly benefit from the project. So there isn't any indication, if there was any concern, the representatives in this with the US Army, Kenneth Easterbrook, for example, Timothy Merriman with the US Army in Hurlong and various other locations certainly looked at this project, and if there was any indication of any concern, would have come up in these emails. The other thing that I think is important is, I'm sure everyone is very familiar with the excruciating process to go through the Public Utilities Commission, the PUC. A project like this had gone through many levels of approval and scrutiny before it even came to us. So again, there are provisions that if another company, if they sell it, or another company operates it, there are provisions that stop the contract. It just can't be transferred. The other thing that I think is important is, I actually, I'm going to go on record, I actually spent probably about forty-five minutes speaking with Brent Moore, because there was public comment that it was sold to a company in Singapore. was public comment that it was sold to a company in Singapore. I learned a lot about renewables. He's a very smart man, Brent Moore. I'm not sure how to say this, but he certainly was surprised that anybody interpreted the conversation in such a way which isn't true. The other thing that I'd like to share that's fact-based, and I said this to Brent Moore, it's very similar, this project, to, and this is the exact analogy I asked if he could confirm, and I use the construction industry, since I'm pretty familiar with that. When you have a general contractor that's issued, let's say, a public works contract, any contract, but I'll use Public Works, that general contractor can actually go and get financing, and/or any business can go get financing. Goldman Sachs is the one who's financing this in a renewables energy division that they are supporting in the United States and other, I'm guessing, other places. But they have nothing to do with the project, so the similarity that can be drawn is a general contractor who go get financing, then that general contractor is still legally responsible, legally responsible for fulfilling all of the contractual provisions to which they signed. If they, for whatever reason, even went out and hired subs, they are the ultimate responsible party. And so I see no reason to bring this back. It's gone through a lot of scrutiny. Some of the allegations prove not to be true. The fact that we have documentation from various folks that confirm that they don't bring up any concern in any way, shape, or form of any, you know, security issue, I am not going to support reconsideration. I spent a lot of time, because I think we all are committed to facts. And I know, serving with all the fellow commissioners, how dedicated we are to really getting facts. So the facts don't substantiate any of the allegations, and as I just stated, I will not be supporting reconsideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And I am with you on your stance of not supporting reconsideration. And I think it's really important, as Commissioner Garcia always brings this board back to with all of her wisdom, as did the Planning Commission make a mistake? And do we have issues with the finding, with any of the findings? So I still don't see that there was an issue, and I still would like to affirm the Planning Commission. So I am on the same page as you. I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
No more, no further comment.
Okay. Any other commissioners before we open it to public comment? Madam Clerk?
Charles Hooper.
My name is Charles Hooper, owner of Calnida. I wish to thank the Washoe County Commissioners for this opportunity to respond to the reconsideration motion to bring the appeal of WSUP 23-0003, Prana Transmission Line, back for reconsideration. The characterization that was made at the end of the meeting on May 9, 2023 is misleading with incomplete information, forming a mischaracterization, an impression that the Commissioner's decision was given to a company in Singapore with a motivation to discredit the Washoe County Commissioners. Her agenda is, in fact, to discredit the Washoe County Commissioners' correct and legal decision to proceed with the permitting of the Prana Transmission Line. I'd like to spill out the relationship between myself, Sierra Geotech, Prana Renewables, and Plus Renewables Technology, and correctly characterize Plus Renewables Technology. I am the landowner. Sierra Geotech and Prana Renewables are the developers and currently the subcontractors of this project. And Plus Renewables Technology is the equity investor. As was stated, Plus Renewables Technology, the equity investor, was created by two Goldman Sachs-affiliated investors. Goldman Sachs is an American corporation ranked 57th in the Fortune 500 list of the largest United States corporation. Goldman Sachs is the second-largest investment banks in the world today, and they have a presence in Singapore. Goldman Sachs is headquartered in New York, as well as one of Plus's technology headquarters also being located in New York. Plus Renewables Technology is involved with many projects around the world, including the United States of America. Plus Renewables has a big presence in the great state of Texas, doing solar projects with ERCOT, the Energy Reliability Commission of Texas. ERCOT supplies 90% of Texas with electrical energy to more than 26 million customers, including areas around the numerous military bases of Texas. Plus Renewables has been well-vetted in the state of Texas and ERCOT. Okay, so my personal background includes 20 years of service in the United States Navy with honorable discharge. My father, grandfather, brother all served in the United States Navy. The upper name is found on the Declaration of Independence, William Hooper. And Absalom Hooper served in the First Continental Army in the War of Independence, Revolutionary War. So national security is one of my greatest priorities. The project is, in fact, part of national security and energy security to the great state of Texas. I highly encourage the Washoe County Commissioners to uphold the correct decision of May 9, 2023, for the permitting of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Brock.
Concern has arisen when we found out that this is Singapore-connected. I did research. I found out that Singapore is siding with the CCP on Taiwan. They are not taking the position that many of us in America, we want to support Taiwan. Many of us have concern about the growing rise of the CCP. I was watching one of the finance channels this morning. They showed a map of many states in America are banning foreign country companies from coming into America. We have growing concern that the Chinese are buying around land around our military bases. We know that China, the CCP, is growing in dominance throughout the world. We cannot take enough caution in America to protect our land and the people of America. So my concern is, even though Mr. Hooper said that Goldman Sachs has a presence in Singapore, I would say, so what? We don't really know what that means. Who is going to monitor this permit? How will you know if it's been sold? We don't know. We don't know if Prana from India, we know that India is also having close ties with China now. This is all, to me, to many of the friends I've spoken with, this is a big mystery to us. We do not feel comfortable. We don't know if Prana puts up the transmission line, it's going to feed into Nevada Energy. Will they do something that can cause brownouts to us in Washoe County? We don't know. We don't feel comfortable with this project. You represent us. We are the constituents. We're bringing concerns to you. We don't feel we've been given enough information. And to address Mr. Hooper, going back to the Revolutionary War, well, my great-great, however far back, he marched behind George Washington in the Revolutionary War. I like Mr. Hooper. Freedom is in my DNA, and I would like to make sure that our country stays free. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Deason.
I agree with Commissioner Harmon on the dangers that we may be up against, no matter what someone said in Hurlong from the Army. Money talks, and I can see that already on this commission. I live just not far south from Hurlong, and I'm concerned about the security of these people from Singapore, from China, from India, or from the United States. What do they have such an interest in Hurlong for to overlook the Army base? And about the security of our military operations there? I am totally against this unless you bring in a United States, everything, American-owned companies to handle this. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have a couple of emails to place on the record.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Clark, I see you've signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but, and the way the open meeting law is set up, I can't really talk to the other commissioners unless we're in this venue. So I wanted more information about this, and that's what I wanted. So I've got more information now, and I want to thank Commissioner Andriola for spending a lot of time on it as well. So again, I wanted more information, and now I have more information. So I think the process worked exactly the way it's supposed to work. Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. DA Edwards, if this board took no action, would the former decision by this board stand on May 9?
Yes, it would. I think it would be better for the record if you, if the sense of the board is to deny it, then I would say it'd be better to do a motion to deny the reconsideration.
Okay. Well, then I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll move to deny reconsideration of the item as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So we have a motion to deny reconsideration and a second. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it looks like that is a 3-1-1. Commissioner Clark, per our rules, if you abstain, you need to say how and why you abstain from the vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm abstaining from the vote because I brought it up. I've come, it's come to my attention that I was probably incorrect in my, well, I wasn't incorrect in asking for more information. I wanted more information. I have more information. I still don't have enough information, so I'm not going to vote on this. Thank you.
I don't think you can do that. I think abstention, I'm looking to DA Edwards, who's frantically looking at our rules. It looks like there are certain provisions that let you abstain.
Yes, but so you're right. This is a weird area. Generally, you can only abstain if you have a legal conflict of interest under Chapter 281A. So if you were, it would be recusing yourself because you had a conflict of interest. So the statutes don't provide for it. What I'd recommend is if you don't have comfort with voting in favor of the motion, it may be better to just vote against the motion.
Very well. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Madam Clerk, do we do this motion again? Is that how this works?
I believe that's a DA question.
Oh, sorry. DA Edwards.
I think if Commissioner Clark just confirms that that's what his intent is, is to side with the no vote, then I think you're fine.
Commissioner Clark, is that your intention?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's a 3-2, and you've got that, Madam Clerk?
Got it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now we are moving to item 19.
Madam Chair, item 19 is a first reading, so I believe I'll turn that over to the clerk.
Thank you.
This is bill number 1896, an ordinance pursuant to Nevada revised statute 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement as required by the Warm Springs Specific Plan, WSSP, at WSSP.8.1, to utilize the regulatory zone designation specified in the Warm Springs Specific Plan Land Use Plan for tentative parcel map case number WTPM 21-0019, Web Family Trust, which is a tentative parcel map dividing a 40-acre parcel, APN 077-130-17, into three 5-acre parcels and 1 24.99-acre parcel. In order to develop any property in the WSSP more densely than general rural, one dwelling unit per 40 acres, the specific plan requires that a development agreement be approved. Among other things, the development agreement adopts development standards for the property in conformance with the Warm Springs Specific Plan Development Standards Handbook Framework, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, such as standards relating to use, uses, accessory structures, building requirements, setbacks, heating and fireplace architecture, landscaping, fencing, lighting utilities, and other matters concerning the development of the land. Further, the development agreement provides for the participation of future property owners in any assessment district or general improvement district, providing services, facilities, and/or maintenance for the specific plan area. The applicant and property owner is the Web Family Trust. The subject site is approximately 40 acres in size and is located at 3325 Broken Spur Road. The assessor's parcel number is 077-130-17. The master plan category is 53% suburban residential, SR, 21.2 acres, and 47% rural, R, 18.8 acres. And the regulatory zone is 53% low-density suburban, LDS, one unit per acre, 21.2 acres, and 47% general rural, GR, one unit per 40 acres, 18.8 acres.
Thank you, Madam, or are you going on? Sorry.
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I really appreciate that. What is the, I missed the bill number, ordinance number, sorry.
It is bill number 1896.
1896. Does the commission want a staff presentation on this item? No? I'm not seeing that anyone does? Okay. And it is in Commission District 5? I'm not sure if the vice chair wants to read this into the record.
Certainly.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I move to introduce bill number 1896, ordinance number, I didn't get that.
This is a first reading, so there's no ordinance, just a bill.
All right. As provided, okay. And conduct a first reading of an ordinance pursuant to NRS 278.0201 through 278.2007, approving a development agreement as required by the Warm Springs Specific Plan at WSSP. And, dot, 8.1, to utilize the regulatory zone designation specified on Warm, okay, I lost my place, on the Warm Springs Specific Plan Land Use Plan for the Web Family Trust parcel map. Further, move to schedule a public hearing for the second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance for June 27, 2023.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Harmon, Madam Clerk, I didn't see any public comment, but I just want to double-check.
Pam Roberts.
Oh, okay. Ms. Roberts.
My name is Pam Roberts. For the record, I live off of Broken Spur. I live within the Warm Springs Specific Plan area. And even though I live or reside, my home is approximately 750 feet from the edge of this parcel. I did not receive any notice, RE, the parcel map application. When this body took away the power of the Cabs to review development plans, they put in place the neighborhood hub procedure. I don't recall receiving a notice through the neighborhood hub procedure either. The way this parcel has been subdivided opens the door for additional parcel requests by the Web Family Trust, and concerns me that there's going to be a subdivision on our street without following any of the subdivision rules. This body took away the financing plan to address infrastructure within the Warm Springs Area Plan, and unfortunately, the PVGID, which is responsible for roads, maintenance of roads within the greater Warm Springs Area, and a couple of the roads that go within the Warm Springs Specific Plan area, is very, operates on a very minimal budget, and unfortunately, right now is in the midst of a very dysfunctional phase. I am concerned, like I said, that with the subdivision happening within this Warm Springs Area Plan, no financing plan, no ability for the people in this region to properly maintain roads, that once this, this... roads, that once this, this continues to happen, whether it's this particular parcel or a future parcel. I would hope that staff at some point would educate some of the newer board members concerning the history of the Warm Springs Area Plan that was approved 30 years ago, so none of you guys are responsible, and probably none of the staff. But if you were to speak to staff, they would tell you that this is one of the problems or areas within District 5, if not the whole county, in terms of they wish it had never been granted, because initially, there was going to be a huge development out there, kind of a satellite community, you might say, and all of those plans went by the wayside. And as a result, it's now a series of patchwork applications, and so there's some people who are building very nicely, and there's some people who aren't. And it's an absolutely beautiful area, and if you haven't been out there, I encourage you to drive out there, because you're going to wonder, wow, this is in Washoe County, and it's only 25 minutes from town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. DA Edwards, on noticing, how does that work when someone is, states that they haven't been properly noticed, even though the staff report says otherwise?
I always have a, it's always interesting to me when somebody's at the hearing saying they didn't get notice of the hearing. So I think that's something you can take into account. Somehow, notice was gotten. I don't know if it didn't get there officially, but word of mouth or whatever. So I think that's significant. I think you can ask staff to go over what noticing was done, in the case, and how they did it, and kind of make a record of that, is what I recommend.
Okay. That sounds great. Is there applicable staff that can come up and just make a record for us?
Good afternoon. Julie Olander with Planning and Building for the Record. I was just pulling it up really quick, so I'm just looking at it. I, I don't know if Ms. Roberts was noticed or not. I have a list of approximately 34 people that were noticed, and so it's just possible that she's outside of the, was outside of the noticing realm, the area. So the noticing went out correctly. However, she stated she's 750 feet, and it's a 550-feet noticing area.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Well, now that that has been stated for the record, we will have a second reading, and we welcome you to come and, and thank you for your comments. And, Madam Clerk, any other public comments?
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. Now we will go to item 20, which is a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, I believe the clerk will handle the first two.
My apologies. Madam Clerk?
Nope. This is yours.
Hot potato.
Item 20 is a public hearing, regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 23-0004 for Bellhaven, consideration of Planning Commission recommendation to adopt a regulatory zone amendment, which abends the Southwest Trucking Meadows Regulatory Zone map, to change the regulatory zoning on one plus or minus 89.8-acre parcel of land, APN 041-140-23, from 54.78 acres of medium-density rural, which is .2 units per acre, 61% of the parcel, to plus or minus 1.8 acres of high-density rural, which is 0.4 units per acre on 2%, so 2% of the parcels, and plus or minus 3, 33.22 acres of general rural, which is one unit per 40 acres, 37% of the parcel, to 41.2 acres of high-density rural, .4 units per acre on 48, 46% of the parcel, or 21.56 acres of low-density rural, which is .1 unit per acre on 24% of the parcel, and 26.96 acres of open space, 30% of the parcel. The parcel is located at 9,000 Bellhaven Road in the Southwest Trucking Meadows Area Plan, and has a master plan designation of rural residential. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, may adopt the proposed amendments with modifications, or may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing. If the board denies a proposed amendment, the reasons for denial, i.e. which findings cannot be made, shall be stated in the motion or discussed on the record by the individual board members. If approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to that effect.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. I look to the board. Does the board wish to see a presentation on this item? I'm not seeing anyone. Commissioner Clark, this is your district, District 2. Do you have any comments that you'd like to start out with?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. On April 4, 2023, the Washoe County Planning Commission voted in favor of this. On January 20, 2023, there was a neighborhood meeting at McKinley Arts Center. As I understand, there was only four people that attended. I don't see a problem with moving forward with this.
Great. Any other commissioners want to speak on this? Seeing none. Commissioner Clark, would you like to make the motion, since this is in your district?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make a motion that we accept or vote to accept.
The regulatory zone amendment?
Yeah.
As listed in the staff report?
As, yes, correct. I'm reading this note here, yes. And make a motion to accept this master plan, the zone amendment, case number WRZA 23-004.
Thank you. Any, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea Olaf. That is a motion to adopt the regulatory zone amendment. I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none. I think that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Manager, now on to item 21.
Item 21 is a public hearing, master plan amendment case number WMPA 23-002, and regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 23-002 for 6755 Franktown Road. Consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation to approve an amendment to the South Valleys Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to redesign 2.9 acres of 53.8-acre parcel, APN 055-200.98, from rural to rural residential, and to redesignate 2.9 acres of the same parcel with rural residential to rural. And, subject to final approval of the Associated Master Plan Amendment and a finding of conformance with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities, a regulatory zone amendment to the South Valleys Regulatory Zone map to re-designate 2.9 acres of 53.8-acre parcel, APN 55-200-98, from general rural, one, which is one dwelling unit per 40 acres, to medium-density rural, which is one dwelling unit per five acres, to redesignate 2.9 acres of the same parcel from median, medium-density rural to general rural, and to redesignate 6.3 acres of the same parcel from general rural to open space, which has zero dwelling units per acre. And, if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolutions to the effect. The applicant and property owner is Rose Haven Properties LLC. The subject parcel is located at 6755 Franktown Road, and is plus, and is 53 acres. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, modify the proposed master plan amendment, and refer the modified amendment back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278.220, Section 4, or may deny the proposed amendment after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any commissioner looking to see if you would like a staff presentation? No? Okay. And Commissioner Clark, this is also in your district. Do you have any comments, questions?
Again, on April 4, 2023, the Washoe County Planning Commission voted in favor of this. On January 4, 2023, there was a Zoom neighborhood meeting, and one person attended. I'm in favor of adopting this amendment. Item number 21 on the agenda, case number WPM, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this. Case number WPMA 23-002, 0002. Case number, same case number, commonly known as 6755 Franktown Road.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's none.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a motion to adopt the master plan amendment. Any questions on the motion? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none. I think that passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we are to item 22. Mr. Manager.
Item 22 is a public hearing, master plan amendment case number WMPA 23-0001, and regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 23-0001 for Village Green Commerce Center Specific Plan. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt amendments to the Spanish Springs Area Plan, which is a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to change the master plan land use designation from three parcels, four three parcels, those are APNs 534-561, 61-01, 534-561-04, and 534-561-05, from commercial to industrial. Adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix D, Village Green Commerce Center Specific Plan, to add three parcels, APN 534-561-01, 534-561-04, and 534-561-05, to the specific plan. And then adopt amendments to the Washoe County Master Plan, Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix D, Village Green Commerce Center Specific Plan, to include the following, and update maps to include the three new parcels and update acreage, and adding a building setback of 150 feet from Pyramid Highway, and adopt, subject to final approval by the Associated Master Plan Amendment and a finding of conformance with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan and Amendment to the Spanish Springs Regulatory Zone map, to change the regulatory zone from neighborhood commercial, which is 10,000 square feet minimum lot size, to industrial, which is 10,000 square foot minimum lot size on APNs 534-561-01, which is 3.056 acres, 534-561.04, which is 3.055 acres, and 534-561-05, 2.843 acres. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, may further modify the proposed amendments, and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278.220, Section 4, or may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing. If approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to that effect.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Do, does the board wish to see a presentation on this item? Not seeing that anyone does. Commissioner Andrea Olaf, this is in your district. Do you have any comments or questions?
I'd, I'd like to just confirm that not only did the Planning Commission go through a thorough process, there's provisions that allow, not just for this property, but any property, in terms of having it be designated as commercial. So if it's, somebody's coming in and wants light commercial, then there's the administrative code for Washoe County that would be followed. But there's some real stringencies in terms of lighting and setbacks, and even where things would be facing. So just in short, if it goes beyond light industrial, then it would go through the whole process of the Planning Commission. So I think the record should reflect that. Other than that, I support this item, and I'm happy to make a motion when the time is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Well, if any other commissioners have comments, looking to you. I'm not seeing anyone, so Commissioner Andrea Olaf, it's the time.
Well, this is quite a motion. I'm waiting for DA Edwards to say, maybe I could just say, move to adopt as presented.
Yeah, you can do that. I would just say.
Can I just read the WMP into record?
Sure. Just, just say that, I think if you're going to do that, just also say that you're making, you've made the findings that are required.
Okay. I move to adopt master plan amendment case number WMPA 23-001, and confirm that all the findings have been satisfied.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So we have a motion to adopt the master plan amendment and a second. Any question on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that that motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we will be going to, oh, yes, we will be going to item 23, Mr. Manager.
Item 23 is a public hearing to allow objections with possible action to approve a signed location lease between Washoe County and the Lamar Companies, retroactive to October 1, 2022, for a 36-month term, with option to renew for 24 additional months, for the continued use of portion and land, of a portion of land approximately 250 square feet within the South Valleys Regional Park identified as assessor's parcel number 142-011-13, formerly APN 142, 142-011-07, to allow billboard sign with rental fee to Washoe County $4,000 annually pursuant to Nevada revised statute 244.2833.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. I'm looking to the board to see if folks have questions for staff. I'm not seeing anyone that does. If that is the case, I am, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the signed location lease between Washoe County and Lamar Companies, as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea Olaf. We have a motion and a second to approve the signed location lease. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now, we're on to item 24. Mr. Manager.
Item 24 is a public hearing, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 70, governing vehicles and traffic by adding new sections prohibiting participation in and spectating at illegal sideshows, street racing, and other exhibitions of speed, declaring illegal sideshows, street racing, and other exhibitions of speed to be public nuisances, providing for some abatement of such nuisances that constitute an imminent danger by appropriate measures, including impounding the vehicles involved, and providing other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Any questions on the second reading?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is ordinance number 1702, formerly bill number 1895.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with that, is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's none.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions from the Commission, so I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve ordinance number 1702.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garcia, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none. Okay. Moving right along, I will close the public hearing. And I have been informed by DA Edwards that we need to reopen item 15, because per our rules, the prevailing side needs to make that motion. And so we're all, we're all learning on these reconsiderations. So I, Mr. DA Edwards, do you want me to read that same motion for item 15?
Madam Chair, it would be adequate if you simply said that you are now making the motion that was made earlier, and then Commissioner Garcia, if she wanted to, could second that. So you would just basically, basically be switching positions.
Okay.
Motion and second. And I, yes, you're right. Rule 7, whoever originally wrote Rule 7.2 had fun in mind, because we're having a lot of fun with-
We really are.
-that it plays out. And it's, it can be a little bit difficult, but I think this is the safer way to go.
Thank you very much. So I will make the motion. Commissioner Garcia, will you do the second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. According to DA Edwards, we don't have to open it up to public comment, because we've already done all of that. Any question on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And looking to the screen.
Commissioner Herman, I need your vote, please.
Yes, and that motion passes, 5-0. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will go on to item 25. Public comment, Mr. Manager.
Item 25 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Terry Brooks.
Terry Brooks is becoming the poet laureate of the County Commission. I'm looking forward to this.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And I came here again today because when it comes to homelessness, I have even more to say. I've been researching our homeless problem, and as I have been browsing, I see the major factor involved as the one of unaffordable housing. When it comes to an area's rent increase, Washoe County is about third or fourth in the nation. And one of the many causes of this is the action called gentrification. Gentrification is a tearing down older parts of the area and rebuilding for the rise in the value of the area, but winds up driving out the poor. And when the area is rebuilt and the rent increases there, then the rent also increases in all areas close to there. And when rent increases at a much higher rate than minimum wage, so many people have no other choice than to enter that homeless stage. If they cannot pay the rent, then they have to leave. That's a disturbing situation that's difficult for me to perceive. Having to leave your home in itself sounds bad enough, but then what are you going to do with all of your stuff? Now, what's going to happen to all of your mail? I couldn't help but fear that my whole life was about to fail. What if all of this happened not only to you, but you also had a family that depended on you too? When such a family winds up homeless and on the streets, they find themselves facing a problem that would be really hard to beat. And there are those who, when they see people homeless, they say, "Not in my neighborhood." But it's nice to know that there are other people who want to help them by doing good. That Washoe County has some affordable housing and homeless shelters, of that I'm glad. But that the homeless problem keeps growing and getting worse is really sad. There are so many problems of homelessness that need to be addressed. I'm looking into several of them and will learn more about the rest. Again, I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to sharing more with you when I have even more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Madam Clerk.
Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments in the record per NRS. First of all, I would like it on the record, I object that we don't have the first public comment time. This goes against the First Amendment and the spirit of the First Amendment. We are not given the right to speak and bring our grievances before the County Commission, which is our government in this case. Secondly, I have concerns. I got notice that the June 13th meeting was canceled. There was no explanation why. We, as a public, have a right to know why that meeting was canceled. There was no transparency for accountability. I later learned that it's because you've been invited to go back to Washington DC to meet with the Porter Group. Again, we don't know why. Again, will that be a violation of the open meeting law? Are you going back to meet with that group to discuss county business? If not, why are you going? So I would like it to be on record that this may be an open meeting law violation. If one of you would stay at home, because I understand that Commissioner Clark and Herman may not be going, then we could have the County Commission meeting. The other matter I would like to bring forward is the, with the open border, with Title 42 being removed, we now have a truly open southern border. Thousands of illegals are pouring, migrants, whatever you want to call them. I know I'm probably not politically correct to call them illegals, but they are. They're not American citizens. So we know that every state has become a border state. They are coming into Washoe County. We know that because a few years back, we were declared a welcoming area. That's the same as a sanctuary area. So where are these people going? Well, then that leads us to the Nevada Cares Campus. Nevada Cares Campus has a policy number five, that the participants do not need to be citizens of the United States, nor do they have to have any documented immigration status to be eligible for Nevada Cares services. That is a concern. Again, who's going to, we're housing them, we're feeding them, et cetera, et cetera. The other problem is, the Nevada Cares Campus has a policy that they serve the transgender population, and also, they serve people who are registered sex offenders. We've got a lot of questions about the Nevada Cares Campus. We have a lot of questions about where are the illegals being housed? What is going on with that situation? How many illegals do we have in Washoe County? We, the taxpayers, have a right to know. We have a right to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Sock, but it looks like she's not here. Oh, yes, you are. There you are. Sorry about that.
Good afternoon, Deborah Sock, for the record. I basically have a point of information. Commissioner Clark has requested each of the last three meetings that public comment only at the end of the meeting be, excuse me, restored to both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. That this be agendized? When will this happen? Since the June 13th meeting has been canceled due to the Commission being in Washington DC. So because he's requested three meetings in a row, I'm wondering when it will occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Theeson.
Betty Theeson, for the record, I'd like to echo the previous speakers on to bring the public comment back to the beginning of the meeting. I attended the Ethics Commission Board and brought this up there also last week. They indicated to me that the Attorney General will be investigating this. So I would like the public comment to be put back at the beginning of the meeting, like your website says it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Finley. Mr. Finley does have documents that I will distribute to the Board.
Please enter my comment and these documents into the record per NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the financial management and comptroller career field of the United States Air Force. Once again, Nevada's open meeting law under NRS 241 is being violated. The Board of County Commissioners needs to move public comments back to the beginning of meetings. Since April 25th, this Commission has taken actions to antagonize its constituency by shifting public comments away from the beginning of meetings to the end. You're discriminating against the elderly and the disabled by being cruel and forcing them to wait for hours on end in order to inform you about their concerns and grievances. You seek to break their spirit. You seek their subjugation. You seek to control those around you because you are weak and have no self-control. Controlling those around you is the only way you can possibly feel truly in control of yourself and in your mind, the world. The state of such a human existence, full of suffering, by making those around you suffer too, is a tragedy. In McKay v. Board of Supervisors of Carson City, 1986, the District Court ruled that a former city manager could be terminated in a closed meeting, while the Attorney General found that this violated the spirit and intent of the Nevada Open Meeting Law, as such actions taken must be conducted in an open meeting. In Chanos v. Nevada Tax Commission, 2008, the Tax Commission held hearings closed to the public, where in closed sessions, it took an individual's appeal for deliberation and voted on it. The Attorney General voided the Tax Commission's ruling due to violating the spirit and intent of Nevada, of the Nevada Open Meeting Law. Per OMLO 99-11, the Office of the Attorney General believes that any practice or policy that discourages or prevents public comment, even if technically in compliance with the law, may violate the spirit of the open meeting law, such as where a public body required members of the public to sign up three and one-half hours in advance to speak at a public meeting. This practice can have the effect of unnecessarily restricting public comment and therefore does not comport with the spirit and intent of the open meeting law. For these reasons, I request that the Board of County Commissioners move public comments back to the beginning of meetings in order to restore the spirit and intent of NRS 241. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John.
For the record, Nicholas St. John. I had to miss the last meeting and the meeting before that. I was here for eight hours, and because you moved this in violation of the NRS Code that the gentleman before me just spoke about, I was not able to bring my public comments. So this may take a while. First thing I need to have the Board to understand is that one of the things that I had done was a provisional voting anomalies, errors, and irregularity report. We took that to the audit. We took it to the manager, who then decided that it was worthy of having an investigation, so there was an investigation open. That investigation concluded in September of last year. And then they took it to the Audit Review Board, which Commissioner Herman is on that board, as well as, I think, Commissioner Hill. And so they, she went through her findings without giving me any opportunity to counter or speak about any of those findings that I found in error. They also didn't, they did nothing to vote on it, to accept that audit. Then it was put back on the agenda, I think, for January. And then during that time, I had presented a 45-page report to all of those on the Board, and it was brought up. Nobody even brought up one single question that had not been answered. I recently went into the audit team and asked, because Samantha Turner has gone on to other things, and so Caitlin's there. So I went and talked to her. She indicated that that report has been closed. I asked how it could be closed when there was no Audit Review Board that had even voted on it, discussed it, and decided on whether it would be closed or not. So they indicated that it came to you, the Board. My question is, did they bring it to you, the Board, too? And did you ever put it on, I guess, an agenda item or bring it up to vote on? Anybody? Yes or no? Yes or no question? Thank you, Ms. Herman. So it's being closed. There's been no, nothing done on that yet. And so I demand that you put it, bring it up somewhere where we can actually review the information, talk about it, and find out what was the problem that this provisional voting record or this provisional voting report showed. As far as violations of the First Amendment rights of being able to speak, I spent eight hours here last, two weeks ago, I think it was, and was stopped out because I had another meeting at 6:00. Therefore, you kept me from having my rights to be able to speak on, on anything. So we're demanding that you put it back on to the agenda. Both Herman and Clark have asked you to put it on there, and it's not there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam, Mr. St. John, you are done. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Madam Clerk, any more public comment?
There's nobody else in chambers, but I do have emails to place on the record.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Manager. Mr. St. John. Okay, we will take a break. Thank you very much. Okay. It looks like we don't need to take a break. We are back. Madam Clerk, will you please come back to, or, excuse me, Mr. Manager? Mr. St. John? Mr. St. John? I do not want to ask you to be removed, Mr. St. John. Okay, we are taking a break. Thank you very much. Okay. I am going to bring this Board back to item 26. Mr. Manager. Okay, I am going to bring this board back to Item 26, Mr. Manager.
Item 26 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do you have anything for us?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay. I am now looking to the board. Commissioner Clark?
Very quickly, thank you, Madam Chair. Talking with Mr. and Mrs. Smith, the folks from Tyrolean Village out in the foyer, they are going to be out of town that week of June 27th. They would ask that that, when it is agendized, that next meeting about that issue take place sometime in July, if that could be arranged.
Thank you. I'm sure it can be.
Rather than, we talked about when the-
They are the appellant, so we want them to be present, certainly.
Right, right. But they're going to be out of town. That time, when Mr. Dave, geez, can't think of his name, Solero, I almost called him Scolari. Dave Solero said that the earliest would be June 27th, and that wouldn't work for them. So they were asking, could be moved back to a meeting after that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that staff can coordinate that. Vice Chair Herman?
I am just requesting that we have a discussion on the benefits of having the first public comment come back. Is that possible?
Commissioner Herman, or Vice Chair Herman, your, our rules, the commissioner's rules, do leave the management and the order of the agenda to the chair. So this is how I'd like to conduct the meeting. It doesn't mean that we're going to conduct the meeting like this forever, certainly, but I feel like this is the prudent way to manage our meeting.
I just was trying to prevent any future problems, you know, regarding that issue.
I think that's an individual's choice to do that outburst or not follow the rules or the decorum of this board. It's not the board's fault if someone is out of order, but I hear you.
Okay.
I've opined that you have that authority, Madam Chair, to make that decision. So I don't have anything different to say about that. I would say that each of you are free to have individual conversations with the chair at any time about your views on, you know, what should or shouldn't be on there, or why you think it would be a good idea. So, you know, you're the vice chair, Commissioner Herman, and certainly you could have conversations with the chair offline individually about that and make your, make your case, I think.
Anything else, Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have, Commissioner comments? Yes, Commissioner Andriola.
I just wanted to state that I previously brought up having the follow-up with discretionary funds of each commissioner so that the nonprofit who is the recipient of those funds, we could have a check and balance. And I'm hoping that we can keep it transparent, simple, succinct, and be able to bring it back. So I have spoken with staff just in terms of a proposal, and I just wanted to bring that up because it would be nice to incorporate that and have the entire commission have an opportunity to comment and provide any feedback that they would desire. But I'd like to bring that, when the, when staff is ready for it, to bring it back here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think staff hears you loud and clear, Mr. Manager. Yep. Okay. Any other Commissioner comments? I'm seeing none. Thank you for an awesome meeting. We are adjourned.